Capello here. A pledge of allegiance, would everyone join me?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. Does anyone have any additions or changes, comments about the agenda? Okay.
I approve the agenda as it is.
Second.
Our cop eye.
It's night.
It's cool, Shai.
Capello, I. So, moving along to public comment, meetings are open to the public, but public participation is limited. If you wish to be heard by the select board, please note the two public comment sections of the meeting to speak on a meeting agenda or any matters pertaining to the business of the select board. In addition, you can schedule public hearings. Speakers must be residents of the town of Barrington, property owners in the town of Barrington, or designated representatives of recognized civic organizations or businesses located in Barrington. When you are addressed and permitted to speak, speakers first need to recite their name and address. For the record, visitors should address their comments to the chair and the select board as a body and not to any individual member. Each speaker shall be provided a single opportunity to comment, so either at the beginning or the end of the meeting, limited to three minutes. Public comment is... Where am I? I lost my point here. Public comment should be limited to 15 minutes, but that's only if you have arranged to have a specific agenda item. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, select board, or the town administrator. The chair will preserve strict order and decorum at all select board meetings. Obscene, violent, disruptive, disorderly comments, or those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder are not permitted and will not be tolerated. Complaints regarding town staff should be directed to the town administrator. After that, we do welcome public comment. Is there any public comment in the room tonight? Done? Okay, how about online?
If you're online, you might have to raise your hand, or if you're on a phone, press star six to unmute yourself.
Looks like probably no public comment at this time. So, we'll move on to public hearings and invited guests. Is there any from the school board here? Don't recognize any faces. Okay. Let's move on to the Energy Committee joint meeting. So, Paul Panish, if you would come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and then introduce any speakers as they...
And just make sure that that microphone ring is green. Okay.
Do you handle the presentation, or do you want...
Whatever your preference is.
Why don't you do it? That way I can clear this off. And also, just as a point of caution, this is a joint select board meeting and public hearing. So, whereas normally I would be addressing the board, in this case, I'm actually addressing both the audience and the board, and I will be taking questions from the public, correct?
Right. At the public comment portion, right, so you have your presentation, we'll talk about that. The board will ask questions of the committee, you are the committee of representatives. Then we'll open up the public hearing for public comment. You're certainly welcome to moderate that. And then, the select board, for your role, in preparing the warrant, after this second public hearing, you'll be considering presenting the establishment of the community aggregation program to voters on the 2024 warrant. So, that's what you will be voting on when that time comes. So, if you want to introduce the Energy Committee members that are here, just so the select board and community knows, and I'll get the presentation pulled up.
Sure, that would be great. I'm Paul Panish. I'm chair of the Barrington Energy Committee. I will let the committee members introduce themselves. Jack Lang.
I'm Jack Lang.
And I don't know how many of you are here for the Energy Committee's presentation, but thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your presence. My goal here tonight is to make this presentation as short and as simple as possible. The real aim of this is to take your questions. This is another committee member, Doug Bogan. The goal here is to take your questions and hopefully answer all of them. If we don't know the answer to any of them, we do have a representative from the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. He can help with some of that, perhaps. And if there's anything within the end we can't get, we will get an answer and get that to you out of the context of the meeting. So, Connor, you can go to the next slide.
And just if you want to, if you can turn the podium, you're welcome to do that. But just try to make sure your mouth is pointing at the microphone.
Yeah, that'll be better this way. So, the Barrington Community Power Goals are to join with the communities that are working through the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire to bring lower electricity rates to the town and to give the Barrington residents more choices in their power selection and power purchasing. We'll be joining a community with a membership of 44 communities, which you can see here. This, I believe, is pretty much up to date. Andrew, is that correct? This is the newest version that you sent me. So, this represents more than 20% of New Hampshire residents. Now, I'm not sure whether it's residents or power customers. Do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, that's residents.
Okay. Okay, very good. So, 17 communities have launched since May and are currently in operation under this program. 12 communities governing bodies have approved agreements for the next wave of launches, and 19 communities are in planning stages, of which Barrington is one of those. And this has been changing very rapidly. The previous slide that I had just a few weeks ago had 34, 35 communities. So, this is growing quickly. Next slide. Just as a quick overview on how this works, the idea here is that multiple communities can pool power purchasing, and through that, they can achieve economies of scale. With the economies of scale, they can leverage power purchasing, which the Community Power Coalition would do agreements. Eversource will continue to maintain the lines and deliver power as they have. Their reliability is completely unaffected by community power aggregations. Everything, they maintain the lines, that you'll get your bills from them. That will remain as it is. Community Power already offers lower rates and choices of rate structure to the currently enrolled communities. In the future, it should enable more choices and different, as different technologies become available. The other point that I will probably drive home a few times here is that Community Power will only launch if it can offer lower starting rates than Eversource. If we cannot offer that, if the power purchase agreements that the coalition has made to date, when we're ready to enroll, cannot offer a lower price than Eversource, it will not Next slide, Connor. So, the question everyone has is, why were our power rates so high last winter? And that has very fundamentally to do with how Eversource buys their power. Because Eversource is an investor-owned utility, they are limited to power purchases twice a year at specific times, and this is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. The purchase price at the time of purchase, so twice a year, is used to calculate the rates, which then have to be approved by the Public Utilities Commission. The difference between that model and what Community Power can do is that we will be able to purch... Or "we" meaning the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. We don't have the technical expertise to do this. They can handle power purchases on a continuous basis, so that allows long-term buying strategies, and they can negotiate lower prices, which would be represented in the next rate offer. The rate offers do only occur twice per year, but the rate offering will be affected by prices that have been negotiated on a continuous basis throughout that period. The large customer base, once again, from multiple municipalities, will give us leverage on power purchase agreements. Rate payer, another thing that will affect the stability of pricing that's offered in our rates to customers are that rate payer fees are used to build up financial reserves. Those reserves can be applied as buffers when necessary to protect against price shocks, which can occur from unforeseen events such as wars in the Middle East or in Ukraine, as we were all very familiar with last winter. This is just, I wanted to show you what your bill will roughly look like. I realize that the bill visuals are constantly changing from Eversource. This was the best I could do. Just to explain to you a few things about what is on your bill. It's split into two parts. Those are supplier and delivery charges. What I have here labeled as one, the customer charge, is basically a fixed charge for a service. So, if you have a meter, you are getting a charge per meter. That is the charge for it. The kilowatt-hour distribution charge is the distribution for local lines. So, that is what Eversource is doing to maintain the lines trim trees and provide the other services that they do. The transmission charge is the long-distance charge. Those are the regional suppliers for the high-tension, high-voltage wires that you see. Number four is the kilowatt-hour charge for energy. So, this, this is what we will be negotiating for. And the other difference that you'll see is, whereas your electric supplier used to be Eversource, it will now say Barrington Community Power. But it will, this bill will still come from Eversource through the same channels. If you have problems with your lines, you do the same things. If there's a power outage, you'll report it to Eversource, just the way you always have. So, this was made possible by state legislation allowing community power some time ago. The first legislation was passed in 1996. It was on what's called an opt-in basis, which means if you wanted to participate it, you had to specifically apply for it. As a result of that, it never caught on. There are third power suppliers, which do exist, and actually, since the price explosion last winter, we're seeing far more people are taking advantage of that. But from what took place in 1996, it was not a successful launch, and the legislature realized that additional action was needed to have people participate in these programs. So, in 2021, they passed legislation that allowed for what was, what is called opt-out. That means if you are not using a third-party supplier, you will automatically be, and your default energy supplier is then Eversource, you will be automatically enrolled in a program like this if the town chooses to adopt it. In response to that second round of legislation, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire was established as a joint powers agency, and that allowed multiple municipalities to work together to leverage their, their populations to negotiate for good prices and good arrangements. PUC regulates, so Public Utility Commission regulations do require utilities to support community power. They have to support it through distribution of power, maintenance of lines, billing, and electronic data interchange agreements. So, how are you going to be affected by all this? As I said, customers on default energy supply will generally be switched over automatically if you don't take action to stop that. If you don't want to be enrolled, you can opt out by telephone, on the web, or through email, and you will be notified by mail at least 30 days in advance of when enrollment, when the program is going to start. There are some exceptions to automatic enrollment. Anyone who's getting power from a third-party power provider, so that may be Direct Energy, Standard Power, any other common names, if you are enrolled with them, you will not be automatically enrolled in, in Community Power. You can choose to enroll, but you need to be aware that depending on your agreement, there may be termination fees or other fees that would, would apply. If that is the case, and you want to enroll when whatever your agreement expires, you can enroll at that time. There are no penalties for enrolling or unenrolling at any time. The other exception to automatic enrollment is anyone who's involved in net metering. So, for people who have solar panels on their roofs, at the moment, because of technical issues between Eversource and the coalition, there is not an effective electronic data interchange on net-metered systems. As a result, it is generally not to your advantage to be enrolled in a program like this, so you will not be enrolled. It may be that by the time, assuming that the town votes for this, it may be that by the time Barrington enrolls in this program, those problems will have been resolved. In that case, we will notify the public of everyone who is going to be enrolled automatically in the program. Should that include net-metered customers, we will definitely make a special note of The other question that I'm sure a lot of people have is, what are the increased costs to Barrington? And there are no increased costs. That, that is the good news. The costs to operate this program come from ratepayer revenues in the same way that the money to operate Eversource comes from ratepayer revenues. There are no implications to the town, no tax implications to the town, to establish and run a community power program. The only overhead costs are legal review by town council of, of the legal documents involved, which is, at least to a large extent, already budgeted for by the town. And once again, the program only launches if, starting out, it can offer lower rates There are a number of reasons that, that the committee has chosen to go with the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. Advocacy is a large one, and advocacy is very closely related to the coalition's technical and operations expertise. And in, in that light, there are really, as you can see, there's a lot of board members, there's a number of organizations involved here on a consulting basis. But there are two people who, who really stand out that, that I would like you to know about. And the first one of those is Clifton Bealow. He is the board chair. He has quite a history. He was assistant mayor, city councillor in Lebanon, New Hampshire. He was a state rep, a state senator. He served on the Public Utilities Commission. And most importantly here, he was a primary author of the original community power law. And he is instrumental in the lobbying and representation of the towns before the public utilities, very specifically right now on this net metering issue. He is a, an incredibly valuable resource to have working for us. The other person that, that you should be aware of, and he's, he's relatively new with the organization, he, he was hired a few months ago, is Brian Kalman. He's the chief executive officer. Prior to this, he was the vice president of power resources at the New Hampshire Electric Co-op. So, you can see that from an operations perspective, he is very familiar with what's going on here. And, and the other, I have to tell you, I've participated in a number of board meetings at this point. I am generally very impressed with the members. My background is as an electrical engineer, and certainly not everyone on the board has technical expertise. They don't need it. We don't really need it to a very large extent, but I've been very impressed with the capabilities that the board has shown to date. Some other names that you might want to know about, the power purchasing portfolio is contracted for, through a company called Ascend Analytics. They do a lot of modeling to come up with the, the purchasing agreements that, that lead to, directly to our rates. Customer service is handled through Calpine Energy Solutions. I can't tell you very much about them. I have seen some of the statistics that they provide the coalition on things like how many people have opted in in a month, how many people have opted out in a month, how many... There's, there's an incredible amount of statistics that they have made available, most of which you look at once and go, very interesting, and never look at again. But the one that, that is very interesting is to take a look at how many people after enrolling have opted out, and the numbers are really in the fractional percentages. It's very, very low, which implies that the, the customers who have been enrolled so far seem to be very satisfied. Next slide, Connor. So, just to give you a quick view of what the current electric rates are, now, keep in mind, these will, should we, should the town vote to enroll in this program, these will not be the rates that will be offered because new rates will be coming out at the end of January. But just to give you an idea of what the current rates are, Eversource at the moment has an energy rate of 12.6 cents per kilowatt hour. The basic rate, which we would be offering as a default, is currently 10.9 cents. So, it's not a huge differential, but it, it is significant over the long term. This is the second rate offering that the coalition has had. The rates were more, there was about twice this differential for the rates that existed at the first enrollments up until the end of August. Next slide. Just to give you some idea of the cost savings that are involved, I ran the numbers for, had Barrington been part of that first group of towns that enrolled in May roughly of this year, there would have been a three-month cost savings to the town of roughly $250,000. That takes into account residential, small, commercial, and outdoor lighting, and it assumes, simplified assumptions, that everyone was enrolled, who was allowed to be enrolled in those categories. As I said, the current rates are lower than they were last winter, and the differential is about half what it was. So, for the next period of time, you would have seen half of these savings. Conservatively, so, I, I'm, I can't tell the future. I, you know, I tried to come up with what I thought would be reasonable estimates of what Barrington, Barrington residents on a whole might save in the course of a year with. We know that rates are going to be going back up again at the end of January. Eversource has already announced that. I don't know what the price differential will be. I have a lot of faith that the coalition will come out with a very competitive rate once again, and I think that savings for the town on the order of a half to three-quarters of a million dollars is reasonable. So, that represents an average of about $140 to $210 per household. Not huge, but I wouldn't complain. That is pretty much it for my presentation. Andrew, could you stand up for a second? This is Andrew Hatch. He's a representative, outreach representative from the Community Power Coalition. I'm going to ask him to join me up here, and if you have any questions, this is the time. Andrew? Just join me right up here. Yeah. Any questions? Anyone? Speak now?
We have a question over here.
Um, so, when Barrington says everything goes through, everything passes, and we slide in and we get that rate of, the rate difference it was up there, that's just a baseline, right? So, when we sign up for this program, we go in at, you know, we'll call it a dollar a watt, just for ease. Are we ever going to go, or are there trends to show where we're starting out at a dollar that it may go down lower? And what drives that?
So, what drives it is that we are, in the same way that Eversource buys energy from New England ISO, we, the coalition does the same thing. We actually purchase power from the same places, and we negotiate, and we have good leverage for negotiation because we're actually, you know, pretty comparable, comparably sized. We're smaller than Eversource still, but we're growing, and we have a very significant amount of population. So, we negotiate those prices. So far, there is a short track record, and this has only been in existence since May. It started out, I believe the first rate offering was 15 points something?
Yeah.
And now it is 10.9. Those are the only two data points I can give you, but what it shows is that Ascend has been doing a good job of analyzing how they can negotiate prices with New Eng, with New England ISO for power purchases, and they have been coming in competitively. Does that answer your question?
No. So, is it going to take more communities or PPAs to drive the cost, drive the rate down from where we're starting out at? So, then that would give you more room for negotiations because there's more power, more power, lesser on the dollar, more for the people?
The more leverage you have, the better position you are in. So, we expect that that will be improving over time. Now, how big a difference that makes? Do you have any feel for that, Andrew?
There's two things at play here that need to be borne in mind. Firstly, the coalition, being a nonprofit, does work in a somewhat different manner to the for-profit models of brokers and third parties. So, one thing to bear in mind is that what would be profit for a company such as that is actually booked by the coalition as a reserve on behalf of its member communities. So, if Barrington were to join, it would have an assigned slice of a pie, if you will. So, that's something to bear in mind because those reserves are accruing quite quickly. Just in the first six months of operation, we have over $6 million on behalf of the community members who have launched, and as Paul said, that's only a fraction of the members who are on deck to do so. To answer an earlier question, 80,000 customers are currently being served by the coalition, which actually does make it larger from a procurement perspective right here today than Unitil or Liberty. There's a long way to go till it's the size of Eversource, but the point in the matter is that we procure power in a different manner to Eversource and can therefore anticipate to be more competitive in the market as it ebbs and flows. The projections of power, the future, are what Ascend Analytics does look into and tries to figure out all of these externalities, but that's, that's not the point. The point is that the coalition tracks to this six-month procurement cycle of Eversource. Eversource will announce its rates in the next week or so. Our committees, our risk management group, will meet, and based upon their deliberations, come up with a price which we fully anticipate will undercut that of Eversource. I mentioned those reserves, and that's why they're important in this calculus, because if circumstances meant that perhaps the procurement practices of the coalition hadn't been able to achieve some of the coalition's hopes and goals, and just the, the time, the, the point at which... at which the procurement takes place for Eversource coincided with some very beneficial rates, the coalition can utilize these reserves to make sure that there's no rate spike, to make sure that we can maintain this competitive advantage over the utilities. So that's that point. And to your other point about the growing number of members, that is absolutely part of our future vision. Once we get to a certain operating size and we have enough money on hand to be a bankable entity, we're, our target is at 120 days of operating capital, that will put us at the highest level of procurement practice that is available. So that, again, means that we have, I guess, more clout to be able to go out and buy at the very best price. So it's only going to improve in terms of the prospect of the differential between rates from the utility and that of CPC.
Did that get here?
Kind of. I mean, I appreciate the explanation of it, but I, yeah, it was just, if, you know, it's going to take more PPAs out there to drive it. Because say if we start out at one, you know, is there ever a chance that we're going to get down to 50 or like, you know, 25% of that? Or is it, hey, we're starting at one, and we know it's going to go up and down from here, but don't see it go past here. But then if there's more PPAs that produce more power, granted, everybody signs up here, you guys get your power to go in and buy, but more PPAs, more power, you get it cheaper, you know what I mean? That was just one question. Because if we're going to be in this for the long haul, and I'm all good, I'd say savings are savings and times are tough. So I totally agree, you know, and I'm just trying to get questions out there for others.
Well, thank you. And it's a very important thing to bear in mind. And as I say, the strategy to procure power in the same timeframe as the utilities just makes the transparency of the rates of the coalition much easier to figure out for folks than a number that is, you know, just had to be worked out as to whether it's better or worse over time. We're always tracking to the utilities.
Dan?
Excuse me. If the six-month period for Eversource starts this week or next week, and it's 12 cents here or 13 cents a kilowatt hour, and we're in at 10.9, will we continue to get 10.9 through that six-month period, or will that possibly go down?
I don't, so Eversource will announce its rates in a week, but they actually take effect, I believe, at the same time that our rate changes take effect.
Okay. But will that rate then last for six months?
Yes.
Give a maximum amount or percentage of the amount of reserve that you?
Well, the target in terms of meeting our reserve, in terms of cash on hand, that is a target set by the coalition of 120 days. The reserves, you know, the purpose, the primary purpose of these reserves is for rate stability and to be able to procure power at the most advantageous rates for the members. There is a longer picture where those reserves may accrue above and beyond that. That is a very interesting conversation, but I don't want to sort of imply to folks that that goal is in the near term, where those reserves may expand beyond the needs of the coalition to maintain its financial stability. And those reserves are and will always be allocated, community by community. So the reason for that is partially because it is your community power program. It is not the Community Power Coalition's program. And Barrington can definitely take steps in the future to do a whole range of things that other member communities may not choose to participate in. You mentioned several times, so PPAs. Power purchase agreements are typically local energy producers, solar producers. Those power purchase agreements are definitely in play from a coalition purchasing perspective, but they're also a conversation between communities, individual and groups of communities around the state who might want to avail themselves of local generation. This is getting a little bit in the weeds of the future, but just to put simply, the coalition is not a single unit. It is a group of members who all have their own plans and objectives, and we are hoping to encompass as many of those as possible.
And Tracy, the concept of excess reserves, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but there is a concept of excess reserves, and it is the select board's decision on what to do with the Barrington portion of those excess reserves.
And I think a follow-up question here. From a public policy perspective, obviously, Liberty Unitil and Eversource, they're lobbying at the Hampshire level to be able to influence regulation. Will this nonprofit entity have the ability to weigh in on those regulations?
Yes. We've just appointed a legislative and regulatory affairs staff member, and she's already started to work on a lot of these issues. Paul mentioned conversations around net metering, but it's very much the intention of the coalition to be at the table as policy develops.
And that was a large part of why we decided we really wanted to support the coalition.
In absence of that, I could see this very quickly unraveling. So I'm glad, no, I truly, there's power and money, and these are for-profit organizations. So I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
I think one thing I would like to stress that may not have come out clearly is that we get asked a lot about, well, why does Eversource do what it does? And it's because of the law and their responsibilities. The concept of default power was never intended to be the majority. It was always the backstop, and the vision of the 1990s law was to decouple the transmission of electricity and the procurement of power. So since then, Eversource and all the other regulated utilities cannot, they're not allowed by law to profit from the provision of default power. It's a pass-through. And on the counterpoint to that, they have no profit incentive to do it efficiently. Just do it by requirement of the law.
There's a question online from Roger Gingrich. You have to unmute yourself?
Yes. Thank you very much for this discussion. Very helpful. I live at 32 Peabody Way here in Barrington, and I'm wondering, with reference to the point that you're not currently recommending that residents with solar arrays, solar power join this, this particular program at the present time, I'm wondering what communities that have a community power, solar power array are being advised to? And does that play into whether or not Barrington would consider this if a solar power array were to be constructed?
I believe, and I will let Andrew follow up on me because he knows better than I do, but the same thing would apply to municipal arrays. If they are, it's a net-metered municipal array, it will be under the same strictures for reasons that are more complicated than I want to go into here. It will be producing power when the power is not being used in the building or at the facility, and you would be, the municipality would be best compensated at the moment by the utility.
I think there's two things to bear in mind here. One is if you're a rate payer, whether that's a commercial, municipal, or residential rate payer, and you have net metering, you have some form of renewable energy. Typically, that's solar, but it could be other things like small hydro or something like that. You are a net-metered customer. As many folks who have solar panels know, there are two types of net metering. One, for people who were grandfathered in prior to 2017, and the rest of the folks since 2017 who've gone into net metering. The way that they're calculated in terms of their compensation for that is fundamentally different. It is the intention of the coalition to support net metering and the growth of local energy resources. It is only this technical wrinkle, if you will, that is stopping that happening. So I don't want folks to think that this is something that will not get resolved, and we are very much hoping it will get resolved in months rather than years. But it is litigation, and these things do take time. And Eversource has made it quite clear that due to certain aspects of their billing programs that are deficient, they will have to be spending money to upgrade them and to be able to supply this data. They're not just being awkward, they're just physically incapable right now of doing this. But it is our intention to press as hard as we can to get this situation resolved. And I'm glad to say that the Public Utilities Commission has already found in favor of the coalition's position. So folks who are rate payers and who are on net metering are all going to be served by the coalition over time. The gentleman might be making reference to the provision of power and the purchase of power locally through these PPAs. That is a different thing altogether. That's power procurement. What we're talking about is net metering and what that does to your electricity bill. So they are two very different subjects.
So in that, did you have more?
Thank you.
Roger, did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you very much.
Could you go through that same example using the town hall? The next item that the Suckler will be looking at is whether we should install solar on this roof. So just tell me again, using the town hall as an example, if there's solar here.
Jack, do you want to handle this?
So a lot of this revolves, Jack Bingham, 226 Maryhill Road. A lot of this, answer this question resolves around what percentage of your energy load is covered by solar, and what percentage are you buying from either Eversource or the coalition? If, like, the town hall array, the potential town hall array that's been talked about, is designed to cover the entire load for a year, from that perspective, there's really no benefit to buying power from anything other than default source because you're not really buying much power anyway. The issue is, when you've got someone who, let's say, does half their load with solar, some of that load is generated in credits. So they work out of the house during the day, so they generate a lot of power during the day, which generates a lot of credits. The issue with third-party providers right now, and this is just not the case of the coalition, but all third-party providers, you get no benefit for your credits. So you make all this power during the day, you send it out onto the grid, you run Aunt Mary's toaster next door, but you don't get compensated for that issue. And the reason you don't is that any one of us who are on net metering, the accounting for this is done by hand. Consequently, the data that they need in order to transfer the credits, they're incapable of doing because it's handled in this insane way. And a lot of that has to do with them making a choice to not install smart meters five years ago, when everybody else did. Anyway, there are some people that could easily benefit from this, and it depends on their quantity of power that they cover with solar. If you're covering the bulk of it, there's really no benefit. I mean, for instance, I, my total bill is $15, and it's for the meter. I wouldn't benefit at all because I don't buy any power. But somebody else who has, you know, half their power, it could work. But the issue is, can they account for it?
So if the array were to magically appear now, and you were enrolled, not recommend at this time?
All right. Thank you. That's good info.
If I understand correctly, what's happening is you're essentially saying that, as you can buy energy often, if this comes down, then you become more efficient at Eversource. And you, it sounds like there is some risk, you're not guaranteeing everyone that it's below that. I don't think I've heard about that risk, but I assume part of that risk is, I'm saying, to me, that suggests the highest risk is actually at the beginning of the process, coming on to a follow-up. Is that, and this is true what I'm saying? How would you, what would you consider?
Are you saying that because you're thinking that Barrington doesn't have any reserves at the onset?
Well, I'm just saying, I would assume that you're essentially edging and doing all sorts of complex stuff in terms of buying the energy, right? And you may not always get a bribe, right? And so the price could go up or down relatively. You're saying you're buffering that by having reserves. Those are the items that happen. But that still requires you all to be somewhat efficient, actively aggregating. But it would seem that those reserves can be one of the most factors that limit those spikes, which we share about. And what I've heard said before is that those reserves aren't totally there, because they're at the beginning, but as you get more people on, you're able to accumulate those reserves. That becomes bigger, you've got a bigger problem. To me, that would suggest that the risks are greater if you're, you know, getting on to the program earlier, and if you get on to the program later, but get on to the program later, it'll be automatically more risky.
I agree with you that as more reserves are online to buffer those spikes, that that reduces risk. However, I don't think that the reserves are the major component of what's important in this planning process. I think what's far more important is the ability to do long-term planning, not having to buy at specific points in time. Now, I'll grant you, let's take, let's take a situation where Eversource happened to lock in a really low rate right before there was some international conflict, and all of a sudden, we were negotiating with raised prices. You could see where that could end up with us having a higher price than Eversource is offering, or a period of time, you know, until the next rate period is negotiated. That can happen. It can, I'm not going to deny it. It will be short-term. The coalition would use those reserves in that case, offer it as much as they could, and until they have the maximum level of reserves, it means more limited in doing that. But those scenarios are pretty unusual. And keep in mind that Ascend Analytics will be constantly going through these calculations and entering into long-term negotiations and power purchase agreements to come up with a levelized cost. So it is a crapshoot in some ways, you know, but whatever you do, you composite a situation where one party or the other is going to cost.
Does Ascend have a track record?
They do.
Absolutely. This isn't a new idea. This has been practiced in many other states for over 20 years. The Community Power Coalition groups in California have the longest track records. And the most effective one around Marin County, I'm not geographically astute in, but it's very large. I mean, it's bigger than New Hampshire. And they have amassed reserves in the billions, and they are currently engaging in some of the very interesting things like interest-free loans for folks to weatherize their homes, to basically double down on energy efficiency and promoting the development of clean energy. So there is some great track records, and those folks have been partnered with Ascend Analytics and with Calpine for years. We did not, we started all of this with volunteer passion, but we didn't depend upon that passion to build the business model. The business model is extremely robust, and it is built to launch with the external expertise, but with the intention to bring that in-house at the most advantageous time because outsourcing costs money. The near-term intentions with these reserves is to bring a lot of this procurement in-house. And we will still, though, be talking to professionals throughout the life cycle of the coalition. Things are, you know, moving very rapidly, and the conservative approach to reserves has already proven to be overly conservative. What we were anticipating would take three years has been achieved in just over six months. So I don't think anybody that was figuring this out was being overly ambitious. They were being very conservative of anything. They were being very conservative of anything.
And just one second. So Scott, you can either come up so the folks at home can hear you, or just repeat his question. Okay. No, no, Scott.
My other question is quite simple. I got the feeling that you were saying that you will know your rate and EverSource will know their rate for January. Do you publish that and do we have an option to switch back and forth?
So there are no penalties for, for-
Turn the microphone again. Thank you.
There are no penalties for opting out and back in. We hope people don't jump in and out constantly, but you could conceivably do that. So, and realize you can only do that on a monthly basis. So you can't jump in the middle of a billing period, it doesn't work. But beyond that, yes, you can do that.
And one thing that was sort of flagged on the rate slide, but I don't think Paul touched on it, was there's opting out, but there's also opting up.
Right.
And the Clean 100, Clean 50, and Granite Plus, of those three higher levels of renewable power, energy, it's only the Clean 100 that actually is currently higher than EverSource's rate today. So folks can also exercise their options in, in those classes as well as in and out.
If I may, a resident asked me a question on that topic, which I couldn't answer. So you mentioned the group that decides rates, that meets and negotiates and sets the rates. And you didn't say this, but I assume that that is a subset of the Board of Directors, which is made up from the members. Is that right?
That's correct. We have seven boards, all of whom are staff with volunteers.
So that group sets rates based on all of the information that's available at the time. The question about renewable energy and energy efficiency, so sometimes those topics align with competitive pricing and reduce costs. Sometimes those efforts, as in the rates listed here, contribute to higher costs. Is it possible that a community would join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, where there's currently four rate offerings, and the Granite Basic is, is one, and you increase the level of renewable content in the different groups? But that group of people, that subset of the board decides for renewable energy or energy efficiency purposes, we want to eliminate Granite Basic this year, and eliminate Granite Plus next year, and Clean 50 the next year. So the only option everybody in CPCNH has in four years is the Clean 100.
That would so, realize that the board that sets the rates cannot arbitrarily decide we don't want to do these programs. That would have to be a decision of the entire organization, the board representation, and the community's representatives to that board.
Let's assume that happens, though, because the, I think the concern is it's still a subset of the residents of a community, and to be fair, an energy-minded subset of the residents. And so is it possible that even the entire Board of Directors of CPCNH, the entire representative body, decides in support of energy efficiency or renewable energy causes, that they're going to eliminate a cheaper alternative for energy rates in support of higher renewable energy content or energy efficiency?
I think there would be a revolt by the members.
I, I think the short answer is no, and I'll give you a reason why. The 23.4% is, is not a number that's pulled out of the air. It's the current statutory requirement of the New Hampshire Renewable Portfolio Standard. It's going to increase incrementally twice more in statute and then flatline at just over 25%. The, the apples-to-apples comparison with the procurement of a utility is that Granite Basic, it is that, that RPS. So consequently, that number has to exist as our guideline to see where we stand, apples-to-apples with the utilities.
Right.
So that, that's, that's the short answer to your question. The other point is that communities are able to launch at either Granite Basic or Granite Plus. A majority, a vast majority are launching at Granite Basic and looking to their own energy committees to do promotion amongst the community to opt up. Lebanon has been the most successful. It had a concerted effort, and it achieved almost 5% of folks moving to the Clean 100. But it's completely optional. We have a lot of communities who are members for the one single reason that they wish to bring the most affordable power to their residents. And frankly, they have no truck with clean energy, renewables, or anything. It's all about the savings. And when I go to meetings like that, I say, it's all good. It's absolutely a good reason to be part of the Coalition. But you can also offer your community the opportunities of individual opting up to, including 100% clean power. And that's only the start. This is, this is where we are today. But I think opportunities exist for different rate categories and, and other instruments. One thing we haven't touched on is that the utilities have not invested in the smart metering technologies and some of the cost-saving opportunities. It's called time-of-use rates. They're pretty common practice in other parts of the country, but the utilities have not had a profit motive to invest. And so what CPCNH wants to do is, is facilitate these kind of rates and mechanisms to be available to its members. So that's another reason that we will look to serve the customers in the most affordable manner possible and not pull an end run on clean energy, if that is not to try to comment.
Yeah, that's very helpful. It gave me some good tools to answer the question the next time I'm asked.
So the floor that you need to mention is that all, all service providers would have to meet at least that minimum renewable portfolio standard. I mean, you can posit some crazy situation where a board runs amok, and, you know, you can always say, yeah, that, that's possible, but I don't believe it's a realistic perspective.
Makes sense.
And looking at rates, there's no incentive for the Coalition to not be able to provide a competitive rate that undercuts the utility because everybody has the power to opt out. Now, I know I'll be the first to admit that's putting a burden on people to act, but that's, you know, I'm often asked, well, why, you know, you're taking over our power and why shouldn't we have choice? Well, you don't have a choice at the moment. You are on default power. You're just replacing your default with another default that is run locally.
Any other questions or comments?
Anybody else online?
Looks like not. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Close public comment.
The close public comment, the board, any further discussion, or are we ready to entertain a motion? Looks like we're ready for a motion.
Entertaining.
Okay. All right. So, Dan?
Oh, go ahead.
Move to submit the aggregation program to voters as presented for their final decision at the March 12, 2024 town meeting.
Second.
All right. So roll call, I think I know how this vote's going to go.
Hard to copy.
Give him some night.
Appreciate it.
Capelli, that motion is passed. Moving on, next will be the town hall solar installation and invited guests. Are you going to also talk us through that, or is Jack?
Yeah, as, as much as I can. Basically, I could read as submitted the, the proposal that we are recommending to the board. Should I do that?
The Select Board's had it, it's available online. Pull the Select Board.
Does anybody need to have it read? Okay.
What about our public?
Would you like me to summarize it?
I was saying, it's linked to the town, the whole proposal is linked to the town.
I think a quick summary for the public might be.
Okay.
Don't we have the closed public?
We did.
Okay. Everything closed.
Okay. So the Energy Committee is recommending the installation of a 40, 43-kilowatt roof-mounted system here at the town hall. We believe that there will be a simple payback period of roughly seven years on that. We've included recommendations to be included in requests for proposals that be put out by the Select Board, and we believe that this would be in the long-term interest of the town. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'll probably direct them to Jack.
So, so what has changed? Because when I asked about how come we didn't do solar as many residents did when this building was being built, we were told, well, it wasn't suitable, so.
It, it wasn't optimized. I, I think that would be the more appropriate answer. It, it is not the optimal orientation, as I mentioned. This would be depending more on an east-west orientation than a southerly orientation, which would give you the most power gain. But because of the dramatic decrease in the price of these installations, they actually have payback periods that are quite reasonable, even in non-optimal situations. And the prices are dropping all the time.
Tracy, have a question.
Tracy.
I see there's a suggestion for the warrant article that utilization of ARPA funds would cover the cost of the installation.
That would be an either or. That would be up to the Select Board. So what I, what the Chair of the Energy Committee and I discussed is the Energy Committee should make a recommendation to the Select Board on what they think would be a good idea. And so the recommendation you have is that the Energy Committee thinks would be a good idea to put a 43 KW solar installation on the town hall. It would be up to the Select Board to decide how to pay for that. I think the two leading options would be either a warrant article to residents in March of 2024, put it in the hands of the people, or choose to utilize available cash on hand in the ARPA funds to spend the cash upfront and benefit from the rebates and payback period.
What's the balance right now for ARPA?
$400,000. So we've talked about a couple of possible destinations for that, that we haven't encumbered any money specifically for, but funding any of the energy audit recommendations at 105 Ramsdale Lane, pending what happens with the library, pending what happens with the grant. We also talked about partially funding Richardson Pond Dam improvements with some of that money. And you'll probably be hearing about a recommendation to take some one-time 2024 operating budget expenditures out of the proposed operating budget and funding those one-time expenditures from ARPA funds to limit the budget increase for 2024, to, to be discussed later.
Thank you.
I had a question. You said, you know, is a breakdown for grants for this potential additional rebates based on labor and domestic content? Can you talk about those potential?
Jack, I'm going to let you address that.
So when they, when they converted the 30% federal tax credit to a grant for municipalities and nonprofits, they added an extra 10% bonus for prevailing wages and American content. At the moment, those things are a little unclear because there isn't much American content. So, yeah. But they have been granting exceptions because there is no American content. So, so that, that 10% in there is in there as a possibility because by the time this were to happen, let's say it happens next summer, this may be a lot clearer.
There was actually some clarification of that just in the past couple of weeks, but it is not clear.
I can tell you, we're struggling with this every day. I can't, I can't get answers for lots of municipalities. But that's what it's, in there as potential.
Not that I have the years and knowledge that Mr. Bingham has directly with the, with solar, but, but my, my two cents in here is, because I do it in my profession as well, it's not the main thing we do, but we do do it. Normally, if this was somebody's house, I'd walk in and I'd say, hey, thank you for your time today, but I don't want to do solar on your house. East-west solar, it is a thing, but you're going to put on more panels, you want to keep them higher up. And I don't think that we'd be happy with it because we're not going to clear, we're not going to have that little bit of extra where we could share that, or however we go about it, I, I just don't think it's wise. You know, if, if we had a ground mount and we could aim and shoot, and we could point, and then we can get all we can get, we're not fixed with what we have on the roof, I'm into that. But I mean, you know, commercial-wise, you're, you're over three bucks a watt right now for an install. So, you know, try and sell me on it because-
Sure. Well, so, so I actually have installed a fair amount of east-west installations. And it's become clear to me that there's a really simple calculation here. An ideal solar solution produces about 1.2 times its size. So let's say we have a 100-watt system, it's going to make 120 watts. An east-west installation produces almost exactly 75% of that. So we have a production number. From there, it's very simple. What does the system cost? How much does it produce? What's the payback? It's not, it's not a complicated calculation at all. It's, it's actually pretty simple. Now, obviously, there are other factors like trees. And when I looked at this, my sense was that the bulk of this thing should be on the west side of the building, and then a row of panels along the top of the east side to get as far out of the shading as possible. Again, east-west installations aren't ideal, but the numbers are the numbers. I mean, we can come to a payback number based on how we know these things perform.
The other thing that I'd say is when you put out the request for a proposal, any proposal that's submitted will do a solar site survey.
Yep.
And they will come up with numbers, and these are, you don't have to accept them. If what you believe is confirmed, you will clearly decide not to move.
Understood. I, I think, you know, it's a great idea, and, you know, I would just, I, I would want it, you know, like you guys were saying, you mentioned the American-made, because the whole idea beside solar energy, right? It's clean energy, right? But say if we're getting some of those panels that were made overseas in certain countries that weren't made clean, then brought over, and now we're putting those in to try and achieve it, you know that's a mess there. So I'd want to see that. And then to use ARPA funds, I think that's totally inappropriate with the list of things that we have in the potential loop here. And I, and I think this is something that we shouldn't decide. If anything, it should go back to the people of the town and see if they want to invest the money to invest in the town.
It sounds like you're, I mean, see if I get, if I'm hearing you right, that we should make this a warrant article, see if people approve the warrant.
I'm even okay if they want to solicit for a bid.
Well, that's what it is.
And then, and then even bring that to the people. You know, like, because if you have the numbers, you have the numbers, and then you can show the people and they can make their mind up. This board is merely just bringing ideas to the people. So, I mean, I'm all about it. I'm into it. Time and a place for it? Yeah, I agree.
So let's talk about how we would do that. We would take, we would get bids. I'm just sort of struggling with how do we get input? We get, this is a big meeting for us to have this many people here. So wait till a future town meeting and take the proposals.
I would see if the board would be okay with having the Energy Committee solicit bids for a 43 KW solar install on the town, have the energy come back, Energy Committee come back, say, hey, you know, we've received multiple bids, this and that. Then we would have a chance to review them and go, okay, well, hey, you know, these two, maybe we'll bring these forward to the town and let the people vote on this.
At, at town meeting.
Right.
So generally, a process similar to that is, is what you'd follow, but instead of taking options to a whole meeting where they vote on a ballot issue, the, the Select Board would say, okay, if you were going to do it, this would be the best proposal.
Yeah.
And then to be ratified by town meeting, right? Where, where town meeting would appropriate the funds to move forward. And the, you know, the award for whatever proposal would be contingent on town meeting vote. And so that isn't dissimilar than, the, the only question before the Select Board is to take it to that next level of, do you want to advertise an RFP to see what is competitively available? The Select Board at that time has the opportunity to say, hey, we don't really like this. Hey, we want to move this forward. Hey, this is such an awesome deal that we should go as fast as we can, and we should consider using ARPA funds. Or, hey, you know, we, we want to wait and see, let's take it to the town meeting in March.
Okay.
Agreed. Because, I mean, all it's doing is we're, we're getting prices and putting it out in front of the people and, you know, see if they want to sign up for it and do it.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion for the Energy Committee to proceed with an RFP for a 43 KW solar system for the Barrington Town Hall.
Second.
Roll call.
Carter, come on.
All right. I'm sure I got.
Secoche.
Capelloi. All right, so we move forward. And then, and we're asking the Energy Committee to look at those bids and come back and.
The recommendation.
Yes.
Some recommendations.
So you're asking us to produce the RFP, send it out, and consider the bids and report back?
We'll work with, yeah, yeah. We'll work together on it. Yeah, yeah.
Connor's got the magic pen.
Make no mistake.
I am happy for that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Yeah, when you say it doesn't cost anything, it costs your time and thank you for putting in your time.
And this is really a culmination of a year's effort of the Energy Committee since formation. Certainly, a big part of their effort the whole time has been the CPCNH and Community Power in pursuing that idea, which is coming to a, an early conclusion ahead of town meeting with a decision tonight, but solar installations also. It's a lot of work from a new committee that was just formed by the select board, so.
Yes, so thank you.
Absolutely.
To the entire committee. All right, moving ahead, our next invited guest is our budget presenter, so land use. So Vanessa Price, please come up.
Madam Chairperson. Yes. For the sake of time, we've had some really detailed information provided as people move through their budget. Could we maybe ask just when something is a variation line item of 10% or more that, that we address it? Sure. Is that appropriate?
Vanessa, is that something you could do to just present? I'm sorry, go ahead. Parts of your budget that are greater than 10%?
More than 10%.
Big changes.
Yes, so.
And I'll say that the Budget Committee, head of reviewing department budgets, said that for land use, tax and building, they didn't need to discuss any of the budgets except for the change in the Building Department. They spent a lot of time, as you'll see in the minutes, discussing the CIP with Vanessa. But they too shared that perspective that these are pretty straightforward budgets and didn't warrant a lot of discussion, so.
I have the easy ones, I guess. So increase of more than 10% this past year has been land use mileage and expenses. The increase this year is there's been a lot of training opportunities as well for board members. So reimbursement not of only staff, but also board members to take trainings is why it went up drastically this year and asking for more next year. Our land use office supplies had gone up 25% change is what I'm requesting. We, the cost of supply is going up. We have a plotter in our office and we're responsible for all the plotter fees associated with that. So those are the only two big ones. We're decreasing our budget for our land use advertising and that's large part due to our planning board applications are not required to be published in the paper anymore. So that's a cost saving for the town. We publish it in three public places, as well as on our website under public carings. So if there's any other questions that I can entertain?
It looks like an average of a 7% increase in the salary and hourly wages. Can you break that down?
That would be a question for me. That is the.
Is that just step increase?
So that's a step in cost of living? So the budget still has a 3% cost of living budgeted across the board.
Okay.
In wage lines, so you remember that in 2022, we updated the, we implemented a wage study from 2022 and 2023. So some of the budgets in 2023 didn't reflect the implemented wage study. And so the math isn't always perfect on equating to a step, which is 2.75% and a cost of living, which right now is proposed at 3%.
Are you taking into consideration in reference to mileage, the addition of another person working on? That building? Maybe that's different.
That's building department.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have two.
So nothing to do, okay. Very good. Okay, that makes sense. I thought it was kind of low and they added more money on that line item, but thank you.
A comment here.
Interesting, you say that the, the mileage and expenses went up because of more opportunities, but the education budget hasn't changed. Kate Ponce.
Free training.
More free classes.
So for, I'm sorry, for the education and outreach?
Yeah, your 40.
Budget line?
4541 hasn't changed, but you said that the 4571 has increased.
Mm-hmm.
Because of, or not, I'm sorry, 4580 has increased because of more training opportunities.
Well, so the mileage and associated expenses are out of that budget line. We have not used the land use education and outreach. I think that's something above and beyond perhaps. But for land use conferences and training, budget line, the 4560, that is also where the opportunities come in for when our board members, opportunities for board members or staff to take training opportunities. So they're separated those two out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in some of these where we're seeing high percentages, like 40%, I mean, the actual dollar amount is low, $200.
Mm-hmm.
No big deal.
Mileage reimbursement remain the same? The actual amount per mile or did it go up?
It, so right now, the personnel policy says 50 cents a mile.
Okay.
I think with the updated personnel plan, the select board should anticipate to see a recommendation consistent with IRS rates.
Excellent. Thank you.
Looks like no other questions. I would ask the ABC to wait for our three presentations. No, I guess not.
Okay.
I don't think the ABC, I have anything to report beyond what's in the minutes. Appreciate you coming.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, building.
Thank you, Vanessa.
John Huckins.
And John is joined by Jamie Jenison, James Jenison, the Deputy Building Inspector and.
Sorry, I didn't see you back there, Jamie.
We'll, we'll say Building Inspector-elect is, is, as part of the succession management plan in the Building Department.
And I'm going to let Jamie do most of the talking because he's the one that will spend in next year's budget.
I like that.
More of a smile, John.
Pass the buck, yeah.
So our budget really didn't change much from previous years. ABC didn't have too many questions and I'm happy to answer any that you may have.
Well, let's address the half FTE and talk about the Budget Committee's plan that they made a recommendation with our conversation.
Looking at the increased need of the Building Department, we've looked at hiring 0.5 FTE and how to fund that. We have the ability to raise building permit fees to cover those costs. And so looking at budget revenue, if we raise the cost of 850 to 950 per thousand is how we currently charge for building permit fees, we'd be able to cover the costs for a part-time employee. We've discussed also a possible full-time, just looking at options, and that could be covered in an increase up to 1150 per thousand, building permit fees. And those numbers do fall in line with other communities around. Many charge 1150. It is a very common number. 850 might be on the low, but they really run the gamut. And like I explained to the ABC, that some have a complicated building permit fee schedule, so they have different ways. We keep it pretty simple with, you know, a dollar per thousand plus an application fee. And I think in the end, the numbers work out the same, but that gives us the ability to look at, you know, cover the department's needs in the future without adding cost to taxpayers.
Just two additional points on that. One, you'll remember the succession management plan we've talked about over a number of years in the Building Department is right now, we have one and a half FTE in the actual inspection field. The Building Inspector, who's also responsible for zoning, as the zoning administrator, code enforcement officer, and then the deputy. So as workload has increased, our goal is to get to two FTE. Right now, we plan to have the opportunity where when John retires as Building Inspector, we will be able to retain that institutional knowledge in a part-time capacity to continue working with the new Building Inspector, Jamie. And we'd like to bring on a half of an FTE so that they can also benefit from the institutional knowledge and training of John Huckins as he continues to work in a part-time capacity. Ultimately, the plan would be to get to two full-time positions to meet that two FTE. And so we have found, and would certainly not make this transition, but generally, we have had a longer tenure in, in full-time positions than we have in part-time positions, largely because of the benefits, the retirement system, that's how the structure is established. And so if that is what we had for a candidate pool at the time, we'd want to consolidate the one full-time, two part-time into two full-time. And so Jamie mentioning accomplishing the revenue necessary to have two full-time employees going to 1150, it's important to keep in mind as we continue developing the succession management plan.
And 1150 was actually for a part-time and two full-times when you did the math on it.
Okay, so it might even be a little less than 1150. The second point, which I think is really important, we hear from residents, and we actually heard from a resident in public comment a meeting or two ago, about making sure that we're not unnecessarily shifting a burden from development that's happening in town on existing residents. And we don't always have an opportunity to parse that out, right? It's not always possible to say that, hey, every road that we have to pave, we're going to charge these residents different than those residents. The Building Department is one where we very much have that ability. The statute is clear that the residents of the community shouldn't have to pay for the inspection services of whether it's an addition or a new construction or anything like that. And so in the Advisory Budget Committee reviewing this budget and making the recommendation to increase the per thousand building permit rate from 850 to 950, that's also really in support of this idea that the residents and, and the building that's happening in town should be funding those services. And if we need to increase the staffing to maintain a level of service, that should come with increased revenue. And so that would be in support of that objective as well.
Does the select board set that rate?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be easier to just go to $10 per thousand and make the calculations simple?
That's absolutely.
I mean, we're still not, we're not making money with that, but it, to me, from a, an accounting perspective, it just seems very simple to make that adjustment.
I'll point it out before John does, that, that the RSA is clear that we're not supposed to profit from it.
No, I understand.
So adjusting it to an appropriate amount if it's 950 to not make, but.
Yeah, and I don't think, so, and this came up at the Advisory Budget Committee meeting as well. You know, we haven't hired an actuary to perform an analysis of our actual costs for the operations of the Building Department and the revenue that we bring in. We have operated on a pretty rudimentary analysis, saying about 70% of the time in the department is spent, spent on building and apply that to the budget. But there's overhead and additional administrative costs, which right now we assign for the calculation about 15,000. But rounding it to 10, I don't think would put us in a disadvantage.
I'd also like to be prepared when we potentially shift an FTE to a contract basis where we're maybe no longer employing the person with benefits. We need to keep in mind that the rate of pay obviously is different than it is for a full-time total rewards package.
Right.
So I think bringing it to 10 would, would probably be the better, more accurate choice. And I noticed that the resident in town who mentioned this and said, let's not continue to place a burden on current residents when we're, what we should be doing is, I noticed he's on the meeting, and so I hope he feels heard in the discussion that he brought forward to the select board.
What proportion of your current budget is covered by fees?
Did the analysis the way I did it before in the past. Like Connor says, it's, did it a few years ago and I've continued doing it. So took the total cost of running the department. And then in the past, I used to use $10,000 as administrative costs. That's above. And then I figured the time, like, end is time. Spends about half the time with assessing and half. Zoning administrator, I figured that I spent quarter of my time doing zoning. Different things happen during the course of the year. Sometimes we put a lot more effort into zoning issues than do building. But if you take that 25%, which probably works out pretty close. So that would, if you take the total of 100 hours that we have in the office now, you take that out, it would give you 70 hours of the 100 total, so that's 70%. So I took the total building department costs, added $15,000 this year because stuff has gone up. If you take like the car, the car we get 10 years out of, the cost is 50. But so some things went up, so I use that. And I divided it by, multiplied it times 0.7 because that's the cost of running the building department. Other stuff is actually.
Can you turn the microphone towards your mouth?
Sorry.
No, you're.
Is actually services to the residents. So this past year, we actually, because the cost of building has gone up faster than our pay has, we actually come out where we're ahead. Now, last year, we were ahead. The year before that, when we changed our rates, we were behind. That's why we had changed our rates. We went from 750 to 850. And since then, we've actually been a little bit more on the positive side, but the construction trades changed a lot in the last couple of years that you really can't plan and, you know, plan for. So even if you use that same analysis, we're probably going to break even on this coming year if we make the same revenues that we have, what we think we're going to make this year. We, we wouldn't really have to increase the rates. But you are increasing more people working, so the cost of the department's gone up. And you really wouldn't be able to base it on 70% anymore because if you did the analysis, if you add another 20 hours, you would actually have to take 130 hours, subtract the 30, and then you're probably at more of like 75 or 78% of what the cost should be. So the rates would change. And then Connor's point about my administrative cost is we really didn't, when I took the 10,000, it was a number John Scruton gave me when I first started doing it and we added to it. But do you add, okay, 1/8 of this building? If that's what we use, if you add, you know, so does that full $15,000 cover it? It's a guess, I guess is the best way to put it.
To Tracy's point, it just seems maybe, I don't know where we fall compared to other towns. You said some are higher, some are lower, but, you know, are we?
We're, we're not the lowest, but we're down closer to the lowest. The, that'll put us probably in the middle if we go to 950. With that said, that you take like Dover and Rochester, they got an administrator that stays in the office all day. They got like five different inspectors that go out. Their departments are way bigger and there's a lot bigger cost. And I would assume they have more building going on, but it's not necessarily the given. We don't have a lot of commercial, we have a lot of residential. The advantage is we got a lot of the contractors that come in town are good contractors. We don't have a lot of the fly-by-nighters because Barrington happens to be. So our inspection stuff on, the vast majority of our contractors are responsible contractors that want to do the job right, and they tried to do the job right. We don't have a lot of fly-by-nighters per se, but we do have homeowners doing stuff. And a lot of times, if a homeowner pays, let's say, $500 for their renovation and a builder pays $5,000 for his building permit for his house, sometimes I put just as much time, if not more time, into the homeowner, but the homeowner also pays taxes in town. So if we add it all up and if the department's costs are met, because you can't say, okay, renovation now, we're going to get $20,000, but we're going to charge our contractor, you know, the $9,000, it makes more sense to tag with an even straight number, knowing that the residents has a little bit of an expectation coming from the town anyways, but the numbers all work out in the end. And how do you, there's no perfect way to come up with a math formula that's going to work every single time, no matter how you break it down. So you try to find one that works as an average going across.
So I think there's a, well, I got a lot going on in my head here that I'd love to get out. We get those contractors in town. I think a big credit is to you and how you. We get those contractors in town, I think a big credit is to you and how you have represented the town and, and showed up and not been that Johnny Law, but been that guy with wisdom and, hey, here to help, and how do we achieve your goal, here are the avenues. So thank you for all your hard work that you've done over the years.
Just to piggyback on that, I came out of the building trade, so I came with a different perspective, and so didn't Jamie. So this, this, I think, makes a big difference on how you proceed in the community and with the builders because of that.
Right. And that's all good stuff. My next point is, and you mentioned it, we don't have a lot of commercial going on. I think when we had our, our meeting, one of my goals has always been, since I signed on, was commercial growth, because we get the commercial growth in town, we get their tax money, they don't necessarily tax our system with the DPW, so on and so forth. So I think this is a great time for the board to be creative, to maybe go higher up on the residential permits compared to the commercial to help gain strength for if somebody does want to come in and go, hey, our building permits are going to be low in this town, and that could be a selling point for somebody to come in and set up shop.
Yeah, to feed on that, the one across the street, it's a million dollars. So you take the million, million dollars, it's, let's say, more than twice what a house is going to be.
Yeah.
We're probably not going to put any more time into that than we would with a residential one. I, because of some of the commercial stuff, having it all design engineered stamp, you know, all the other stuff where that there's actually, depending on, a lot of the res, the base stuff, we do our own inspection on, but once in a while, we run into something TurboCam did a third-party review on their electrical stuff. If you see their electrical system, as you're an electrician, you probably know that's, you would have to stay on the job where they're putting it together to really inspect that. That's not something that you can show up for ten or fifteen minutes after they've worked there for six weeks and be able to truly see what's done.
Right. Well, with that, you know, so if the commercial, you know, went up in that much effort, it should be cheaper than residential, so.
Just, just to point it out, if you look at the other towns, they charge more for commercial than they do residential, and that always blew my mind.
Well, we're trying to encourage, you know, well, at least that's one of my goals here, is to encourage the growth for it in the town. Two, I, I don't think we should be worried about quote-unquote making money, because we're in this pickle across the board with our fire and police right now, where, you know, money's tight and people are walking because they're going to find the job that's going to pay them the most, because it's the same stuff over here as it's over here. It's just whether or not one's going to add five or ten minutes to my drive time in the morning. So I think we should raise our rates and plan on having a definite second full-time and not if, you know, hiding money, it's not anything like that, but we should, we should anticipate, hey, we're growing, people are building in town, it's quite obvious, and it's going to happen. It's not a matter of if, it's just when. But, I mean, that's my discussion with the board, you know, open in, in the form, because it's like, hey, you know, they're, they're pounding away at houses, but.
In the budget.
The rail isn't in yet, you know?
Budget, the budget committee did talk about that, that having incremental increases to the rates, building up to what would, you know, when we need more money for additional full-time, so that's pretty consistent with the recommendation from the budget committee as well.
So what are people proposing for an amount?
I would like to simplify it to ten dollars per thousand.
Is that what you're saying, Jim?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's our opportunity to change the rate, Tracy said go up to ten, let's keep it an even number, even peel, that's going to put us up just above the median, you know, for, for towns. And, you know, if, you know, if there's extra time that we have to spend with residents on a job, you know, that, that hour or whatever is allotted for that. I mean, it's, it's not going to go to waste, I, I know that, but.
No matter what the fees are, we're going to do our job and serve us the community.
Good, because.
That's the baseline, yeah.
John, to, to go back to my first point, you are, you are a dinosaur, a dying breed of a guy that gives his one hundred every day, and you don't put down all the hours that you served in this town, where, you know, we might not be as fortunate to get somebody coming in that believes and works like you and/or Jamie, and is, is going to want the top, not want to be paid for every hour, you know, every minute, you know, we might come across that. So, you know, it, it's all about thinking ahead and.
Part of the reason for the extra employee was my institutional knowledge. People will come in and ask a question, I can just give them the answer. Someone new, I mean, even Jamie's, every day, there's still something more to learn. If I'm not here, how much time is spent looking up something and trying to get there? Does that involve that extra time, which is, got to be paid somehow?
Right.
I, I get it.
I, I, it was, I agree, that should be higher, and I think that, I don't think commercial and residential should be different, though. I think that, to the same point Connor was making earlier, you know, as a user fee, for those who are getting, you know, outspent or whatever in the community, if we give a lower rate to commercial, we're saying to those same residents that you're going to have higher rates so that the commercial rates can be lower. And so in that same regard, I think that if we raise them, which I think we should, it should be raised for both commercial and residential.
So I would make a motion to move them to ten per, per thousand.
Yeah, I don't even, are we making a motion?
So you certainly can, it will require a motion. We had talked about it as just starting January first, because that's kind of clean. We wouldn't hire an additional half an FTE until after the budget passed. But, so if the select board, the only change, it sounds like that there's a consensus for, is an increase in the per thousand cost for building permit, from eight dollars and fifty cents to ten dollars per thousand.
Effective January first.
Twenty twenty-four, so if you want to make that motion, and then we can get them updated, start informing.
So I would make that motion.
And it's for residential and commercial?
Yes, for all building.
We have to, we have to bring that to the governing body?
No. Nope, this is select board's authority to set fees.
All right.
Second.
Roll call?
Hard to copy.
Gibson, I. Man, trick, I.
The democratic process, as Sakoshai.
Capello, I. The motion is carried.
Madam Chairperson, I just want to point out and clarify, just for the constituents that may be watching or anyone else, John actually is compensated for all of his work hours, he doesn't volunteer his time. As your employer, we're sure that you're paid appropriately. Good, check that box.
Okay. All right.
Otherwise, thanks for your budget, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next invited guest is the Tax Department, so Linda Markowitz and Crystal Murky, are you coming up as well?
Yes, and so as they approach.
Yes, we need to hand out.
Well, we have both this, so Crystal Murky is the tax collector-elect. So Linda, as part of the succession management plan, Linda is retiring in April.
What?
And Crystal has been working towards the tax collector role all along, and has worked closely with Linda in the development of this budget. As John said, she will be responsible for spending this budget, just as Jamie will be responsible for spending that budget.
I didn't realize that was a.
There you go.
And most importantly, Linda brought Swedish brownies for our indulgence in, in recognition of, I need to get this number right, the dramatic increase of the budget that she has proposed, which is eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand dollars.
Over a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to our tax collectors.
And just the highlights, please.
So I'm passing it on to Crystal, because I think this is good practice for her, and she's just gonna, I like the increases and where we tried to decrease to offset.
Now's the time to get really nervous.
Okay. Done.
So helpful.
Going to break it up.
So you'll see that the contracts line, we did just contract with a new title search company. We wrote this up, I think, before that contract was finalized. So we are expecting twenty-eight fifty per search, that does include notice prep and not mailing, not certified mail.
Which line is that?
That's the forty-three-ten contracts line. You'll see the equipment rental went up, now that we take card swipe, we do have the thirty dollars a month. That's the forty-four-forty-two line. Conferences and training going up with anticipation of the next deputy. And an increase in office supplies if myself or the deputy maintain a notary stamp. Otherwise, we tried to decrease, we really looked at everything and what's actually spent, how we've been trending, and tried to decrease in other spots. The registry of deeds, we decreased postage, and.
That's about all of it, really. So the increase on the contracts would probably be about five hundred. Thirty-five hundred for that one. Our past title search did not work out this year. Our past title search did not work out this year, so we have contracted with a new contractor, and they are a little more expensive, but good feedback, yes.
And that all goes back on what's collected with the lanes and everything anyway, so.
Right, those are fees that are collected, recovered.
Yeah.
So the sheet that you gave us.
Yeah, we're anticipating it to be closer to thirty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to me, thanks, guys.
I would comment, these, these are disgustingly good.
Good thing Linda made them.
Pass it down to our staff, they haven't had a chance to.
Anybody left, left in the audience, sad.
There's not much.
And, and I'll say, one of the things I appreciated most when I first started working here was Linda's approach to being the tax collector, right? So the town sends out thirty million dollars of tax bills a year, and all of that.
No, we got them.
We, we keep, the town only retains sixteen percent of that, right? But Linda, now Crystal, responsible for talking to all of the business owners, the property owners, about that, about what it means, and you won't find anybody more compassionate than Linda, and Crystal's a close second, and so having them work together through the positive conversations and the tough conversations has been really helpful. So we, we're very fortunate to have the office that we do dealing with, especially this year, an increase in assessed values and what that's done to taxes as well.
I'm sure you had lots of questions. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
So moving on to consent agenda.
Make the motion to, to approve the November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three consent agenda A to D as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Bye.
Gibson, I. Man, trick, I. Sakoshai.
Capello, I. That is moved. New request for signature. Oh, we dealt with that, excuse me, moving on to appointments, yes. Library trustee Melanie Haley, this application is up for discussion. She is currently a library trustee alternate, would like to be appointed to the library trustee vacancy, and that will, term will continue through March of two thousand twenty-four, so a short term, and we will vote on that next week. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Nope, reviewed her application.
Good stuff, good member, right?
Yes.
Recommended by the trustees, yes.
So let's move on to staff report, Administrator McGarver.
Yes, thank you. So we are at our last meeting in November, so we've reviewed these work anniversaries a few times now, still appreciate their tenure. I wanted to mention that the twenty-second annual Barrington soiree is happening on December first, which is a Friday from five to eight. So this year, and I actually didn't know this until recently, but the Christmas stuff is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary, and so in recognition of that, they're sponsoring a fireworks show that evening, and so the police chief has issued a waiver to the noise ordinance in support of their fireworks show, and they've got approval and appreciation from the fire chief for that as well. So this is a great community event, if you haven't been, I encourage you to check it out, but that is on December first. Next, the strategic planning update. So we've talked about this a few times, and back in June, when we met for our strategic planning session, we talked conceptually about revisiting the strategic planning session to track our progress. We also talked about dedicating a meeting to it later in the process. At that time, I was optimistic that we could consider taking like the December eleventh meeting and saying, let's do just strategic planning there. I think we have too much going on to dedicate one of our regularly scheduled meetings to that purpose, and so what I did in advance of tonight is I took the format of the strategic planning document from June twenty-seventh, and I added the overview of the session at the beginning, so a review of, of what we did. And then in the goal areas and background, I, I left the background mostly unchanged for that baseline knowledge information, but I updated the notes and the progress since June twenty-seventh and the next steps to reflect where we are now. And I was actually, you know, I, obviously, we have, there were a lot of the one-year goal items which we have been working on at almost every single meeting. We haven't necessarily brought this strategic planning document to every meeting and, and said as much, but I was really impressed by how much progress we had made in so many areas.
Huge, yeah.
Between June and now. And so you'll see that in the progress since June twenty-seventh sections in each goal area, and then the next steps. And so it's really up to the select board on where you want to take it from here. Certainly, we can talk about scheduling a separate session outside of our next two regularly scheduled meetings on December fourth and December eleventh, or take this update and, and discuss it more specifically at upcoming select board meetings with the topics that we have to discuss. I think the big things that are, the big things that this session has been driving over the last few months has been the discussion of the town center, the discussion of that property in the town center, the discussion of the library, and then in general, the discussion of the infrastructure that the town is pursuing and, and how we're going to pay for those. So you'll remember that when we did the October second select board meeting, that was really a subset of our strategic planning focused on infrastructure, we reviewed the capital improvement program and how to fund them, how to fund the, the projects on that. And so this is where we are, where do you want to take it from here, and, and what format do you want to move forward with? Tracy has a hand to it.
It occurs to me, we broke these out into like one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year. Is there anything that you identified in this report and that we were to accomplish in that one-year timeframe that we are lagging on? Because if there is, then I do think we need a meeting.
Right, no.
And if there is not, and organically through the work that's taken place, and certainly some of the opportunities that have come up unbeknownst to us until they came up, if, if we really have progressed far enough through at least all of the one-year items, then I, I would think we don't need a meeting, but.
And there's one area that we identified as a three-year goal, but I really think that we should start making progress on, and it actually came up earlier in the meeting in a tangential way, but it's the property behind Liberty Truck, the hundred-some-odd acres that the town owns back there, that has been identified for more than a decade as a suitable area for commercial development. And so I, I think, so that's a three-year goal, we had, we didn't say that we were going to make a ton of progress on that this year, but I think as we cross things off the list and wait for March, you know, maybe the time period from middle of December to March would be a good time to make some progress on that.
How the rest do you feel?
It seems with all the warrants that we have lined up, potential warrants lined up, and then what we've talked about for investments that need to happen in the coming years, capital improvements and things, that a strategy for how we roll out warrants or, or plan for warrants should be tied to our strategic planning. And because, again, there are so many proposed warrants, it, you know, do we talk about the warrants as a working session in our select board meetings like this? I personally found the, the roundtable kind of discussions we had, that the strategic planning really effective for conversing, so I don't know what the board thinks about how we want to strategize the warrants.
That actually brings up an interesting point, so the, if you've been reading the advisory budget committee meeting minutes, you'll know that the budget committee has spent a lot of time soul-searching this budget development session, mostly centered around the idea that the budget, the budget is a pretty well-refined product, even by the time it gets to the budget committee, and they have desired to focus more on the bigger picture and planning for the future. And part- picture and planning for the future. And part of that has been, how do we message? How do we communicate to residents, especially of the warrant? And so it might be useful with, for the fear of making too much of a big meeting, although we had a really productive Advisory Budget Committee and Transfer Station Recycling Center Committee meeting, it might be worthwhile to have a workshop with the Select Board and the Budget Committee focused specifically on the topic of messaging and educating residents about two thousand twenty-four warrant initiatives and discussing strategies and what each group can do collectively and separately. One of the things we talked about, right, was showing up at the primary vote on January twenty-third. The Budget Committee could be there also, you know, hey, talk to your Budget Committee members. So maybe that's an idea. We can talk to the Budget Committee about tomorrow, or maybe you want it to just be the Select Board. I don't know, but.
I think, you know, Tacko, what Tracy and Rob said is the meetings are, I think, highly successful for us because we don't, yeah, we have a little bit of an agenda, but we can really address the spots that are needed and not have a list of people and appointments to go through and speak freely and get in that creative motion with the team here.
I think if we do merge the two groups, it's helpful to have a facilitator, because I think these are some of the best of the best volunteers in Barrington, but I think they're also very intelligent, smart people with strong voices, and I think it's important to have a facilitator, because I think it helps us listen to each other.
I see a lot of head nodding. If I was going to propose a date, I would suggest December twelfth. That's a Tuesday. The last select board meeting ahead of the budget hearing in January is December eleventh. And so that's the drop-dead date to finalize the budget and mostly finalize warrant articles, although there's opportunity to update numbers after that. So the Budget Committee typically meets on Tuesdays at four-thirty. I would propose a four-thirty timeline just to coincide with the regular meetings of the Budget Committee, but we can ask them tomorrow. But how would the twelfth at four-thirty work for this group?
For me?
Good.
I can do it.
Twelve-twelve?
Yes.
Twelve-four-thirty.
Twelve-twelve at tw- no, four-thirty.
I'm always at four-thirty.
Be able to do that.
Okay, so we'll talk to the group about it tomorrow and finalize, look for an email from me tomorrow evening to finalize something about that.
You're going to check in with a facilitator?
A facilitator, yes.
Yes, awesome. One of the other things, just to give thought to, there's a lovely human named Matt Wyatt. He works for the city of Rochester. He produces an online newspaper called the Rochester Post. And I know you had suggested, was there a good way for the town to communicate to residents? I had never read the Rochester Post, because I'm not a Rochester resident. However, I had asked them to publish a rotary article, so it caused me to go there and read through things. Really, really terrific way to communicate to the residents of the town. The downside to that is you have to employ someone to produce an online newspaper. He's an excellent writer. He's very naturally good at what he does, and he manages, you know, Rochester Main Street and the Rochester Posts, and I think probably three or four other online platforms. But anyway, something to consider as we grow.
I, so three years ago, I said to Blaine Cox, forty-sixth former city manager, I said, how come there's so much good press about Rochester in the newspaper? And he said to me, well, we hired a public relations consultant that writes articles for us and submits them to the newspaper. And I said, wow, I thought for sure that that was just happening organically. And then I talked to him two years ago or a year ago.
Blaine or bad Blaine?
Blaine. And he shared that the city council decided to take the money that they were funding the public relations firm with and pay a full-time employee for this purpose, and they created this Rochester newspaper. That would be fantastic. I hesitate to think Barrington is ready to hire a full-time person for public relations.
We're a third of the size, a little under a third of the size.
It is remarkably effective.
Yeah, it's very effective, and as that city is really, I'll use the term, morphing itself from the inside out and really changing its reputation and how it functions and what their downtown area looks like and how their businesses are coming. They've really, they've done a remarkable job.
PR can also be a great split or shared position, too. So I always think about tacking it onto another.
Oh, communication.
Next staff meeting, ask for volunteers.
Future hires.
So send me, we don't have to discuss it now, but send me information that you need, additional background in advance of a follow-up strategic planning session with the Budget Committee that you need to go in. So just...
Let's talk about what that agenda is going to look like. What topics will we be covering?
So do you want to brainstorm and come back at the December fourth meeting to finalize an agenda?
I think so.
Okay.
What do you think, Dan?
I think that's fine. I mean, I think communication, I mean, we just said that, and the Liberty Truck property. If there's any way we can recoup some monies from that.
I might focus the meeting just on the two thousand twenty-four warrant, which Liberty Truck will have nothing to do with. And so I would defer that conversation and just focus on what are we asking voters for in March? How do we talk about it? How do we educate about it?
The messaging. What is the messaging coming out of the Treasury Department? And the town perspective, what is our messaging? Did anyone else read the municipal magazine? They talked, the Taj Mahal article?
The town and city.
I went crazy marking that up. It is such a well-written article about what growth really means within a municipality and why it's important. And it is, it's just a very succinct two-page article. But I thought messaging in there is so important right now as we are approaching this year's warrant article.
I'll send, I'll send the article out to the whole group.
You want my highlighted copy?
Okay. Strategic planning? Ready to move on from that?
Yes.
Great. Oh, so Ask Barrington, I just included this only to share it in additional places, but we put together a list of eleven questions that residents have asked as they've received their tax bills and researched information and had questions. So I would encourage the Select Board or anybody following along at home or in the audience to review the information if you have questions, but certainly just reach out to the town. We've spent a lot of our time in the last couple of weeks talking to residents and answering questions, and we're always available to talk and share information about the process. So moving on, that's all I have in my staff report.
Thank you, Municipal Officer Administrator Tiffany Hoppe.
I actually cut and pasted that on some other sites when, when things were taking a turn for the worse in the comment section. And I basically was able to cut and paste and say, here are all your answers, and everything stopped right there.
Great.
That's awesome.
Great. I have nothing. Okay, great. Moving on to old business, establishing a town center with a tax incremental financing district, and we will require a vote on this.
So this is something we've been talking about for a year and a half now, really. And the conversation really started again in earnest in June, talking about the vision for the town center and the thirteen-acre lot that came up for sale. The Select Board has talked about it on and off, and, you know, I kind of highlighted some of the steps that we've taken. We talked to residents. We went to the concert to hear from residents. We enlisted the services of TF Moran to update a vision document for us for the whole town center and for, you know, a town-owned lot in the town center. And so the big question has been, how do we approach this? There's been support and energy all along for not letting this opportunity pass and, you know, making a spot for the town in the town center. And so what, what I did is I crunched some numbers on a reduced-sized tax increment financing district in the town center, which would essentially just be the town center and village zoning districts, and showed that with development that is already in progress in that area and the value of that development in progress, there's expected to be approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year available by two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six. And so if that's captured in a tax increment financing district, those are funds that could be used to be invested in that area to include buying this lot, to include making improvements on this lot and making transportation improvements. And so I think if the Select Board were going to pursue the purchase of this lot and/or the establishment of a tax increment financing district by voters in March, bundling the two together, negotiating a purchase and sale on the lot that's contingent on the tax increment financing district, that where we are able to show residents, this is where the revenue would come from, this is how we would spend it, this is what we would give to you for that, without raising additional taxes, capturing taxes from within the district to do that. And that would be how we could accomplish all of those goals in a, in a package, I guess.
Go ahead. I was going to say, in addition to that, this kind of addresses the issue we talked about earlier with the building permit, is that a lot of the funding of this will be from people moving in and new people, new businesses, new advantages that have in the center. In some ways, it roots a lot of that money.
Right.
As opposed for everybody spreading this around.
Tracy and then Jim.
When the word transportation is listed, are we including sidewalks and bike paths in this plan?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to know that. The two comments I'll make are, when the tax incremental financing district was first introduced last year, I think it needs a marketing program in and of itself, but a former Select Board member, and I don't think his opinion was wrong, I don't think it was right, but I think it was a strong opinion, was that putting this type of financing into place without something concrete attached to it is not okay. That's one opinion. I think having this, and again, piggybacking on our resident who spoke at the public hearing portion of our meeting last week, tying this to a very concrete development, but also, we know as we grow as a municipality that services are needed. And I think having that focus within the town center and being able to provide those services answers much of what we've seen in both the housing surveys that were taken, in the recreation perspective, all the way back to, what, two thousand and seven, when we started talking about a village district. We're finally getting to the point where we're using that tax incremental financing district to address and provide for both the future growth and giving taxpayers what they've asked for.
How do I follow that? So I think this is very important to the town, as Connor mentioned, if you were listening closely earlier, the town to have a lot in the center of town. I think we may have a sliver here or there for a right-of-way or a parking lot, not a very big size, but we would have a lot. So what would that do for Barrington? And is, we would be able to take that thirteen acres-ish and design it to what the town would want. We all have ideas, great, but it's what the community wants at the end of the day. I think it's very important, because, you know, I think majority of residents that I have spoke with and dealt with, you know, they like the small-town vibe, they would like to see something similar to like the concert series that we had this summer, where, you know, you see the town come together, and it's not people just coming in and camping and see you later, bye, and this is a corridor town, and everybody drives right through it, and nothing happens in this town besides great school programs and all of that. But to simplify and kind of touch back on, you know, what other residents have said, the Tiftistic, if you think about it simply, it's a tool. It is, it's a tool for the board to use at that time with that tax money that comes in to help put forth into future infrastructure or projects or a field, or I don't like the idea of sidewalks, but maybe painted lines on the side of the pavement, so we could just plow it and not sidewalk it. But all that stuff comes into play, but it gives the board at the time the tool to use that money, which isn't going to cost extra money from the housing in Barrington that is current. But I definitely think it's important, now's the time, because that land seller in town doesn't have to sell to us necessarily. You know, he could keep it till he passes on and passes it to his grandchildren or whatever. And it's not going to get any cheaper. We should have bought this years ago when it came up for sale, but yet again, we are here. And I think if, if we want Barrington to remain Barrington, it's a crucial purchase for the town.
And I would echo that. I, just as a follow-up, I think that it was on the market for around three fifty the last time it came up. But I like the timeline of securing the land and then having a year of listening sessions with community members to see what kinds of things they would like there, because the rec department has sketched out some really interesting things, and we all need to be part of that.
So one point, and Tracy, you mentioned about the, a dedicated public information campaign. So one thing that I think we have time for, which would be really effective, and I'm just gauging the board, it seems like there's support for this moving forward with this type of model. So with a tax increment financing district, you're required to have an advisory board. And there's no requirement to have that advisory board until there exists a tax increment financing district. But the Select Board could convene an advisory board now. And so that advisory board by statute is required to have primarily representation from within the district that it is. So in this case, you know, we could find residential representative, business representative, select board representation, and form that working group to be, to eventually be, if passed, an advisory group for the tax increment financing district, but use that group as a working group for messaging and educating residents and meeting with folks within the district. And so I would say if there's support for moving forward with this, maybe we also consider advertising applications for appointment for an eventual advisory board for the tax increment financing district.
As long as we had some criteria, and it sounds like you have people, businesses or live in.
Right, so.
Whole board doesn't have to be from the area.
Correct.
Right, but we would need.
Close. I have, I know people would.
I don't think all of Malago is.
I'll be, yeah.
I think Dana had that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just.
You're just scratching your head?
No, well, I am now. But if we're just through the discussion, I was going to move that we authorize the town administrator to begin negotiating a purchase-sale agreement with Madison Three Nine Lot Seven, structured with those new tax financing district.
In addition to...
Advertising appointment for advisory committee?
Yes.
Dan, and is that part of your motion, though?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Oh.
Second, so roll call.
Harder cop, aye.
Give us an aye.
A true aye.
It's a co-shake.
Capella, aye.
All right, moving on to the two thousand twenty-four warrant articles and funding discussion. So this is a discussion.
Right. This is a document that the Select Board had asked for. Usually, I would generate this document late December, early January, after the warrant has been finalized, but I understand the value in reviewing this information as we are finalizing the warrant and individual warrant records. And so I structured it a little bit different, because we're a little bit earlier in the process. But essentially, what this does, the first section talks about tax rate impact calculations. And so what that tells you is that every eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars of appropriation is equal to one cent on the tax rate, based on our current valuation. And what that also says, which I am seeing here that there's a typo, that I did an evaluation early in the budget process to calculate the average home price in Barrington, not the average sale price of a home, that's different than the average home price, but the average home price in Barrington is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You have that analysis in your budget binder in the tax rate section. So anyways... So anyways, based on those two facts, the $18,425 being a cent on the tax rate and the average home being $425,000, for each warrant article, I listed funding, if source, if there is any, the tax rate impact, and then the average home tax bill increase from that. And so I won't go through all of the different proposals. The bond is interesting because the tax rate impact doesn't have an impact on that year, it has an impact on the next year. And so it gets a little funky when you're describing that, because you need to talk about a tax rate impact, so people are making an informed decision, but it's not an immediate tax rate impact. But anyway, so the whole list of warrant articles is in there. One thing that I'll draw your attention to is the, on the last page, the fire and ambulance revolving fund, depositing 100% of the revenue in the revolving fund. So that would take $80,000 of revenue that would currently be going into the general fund and commit it to the ambulance revolving fund. So that's listed as a tax rate impact, not as an appropriation, but as an, as a reduction of revenue. But just showing you, we're capturing all of the factors of tax rate impact. Okay, so now still on the last page, there's two important sections here. First, unassigned fund balance, anticipated to be available to buy down taxes in 2024. So with the updated tax rate, we have updated general fund operating expenditures, which allows us to update our projections for unassigned fund balance. So currently, at a minimum, we anticipate having $750,000 in excess of the midpoint of the range, 12.5%, available to buy down taxes in 2025, uh, 2024. This is on par with last year, we used $747,000, and on par with the year before, we used about $767,000. So we have maintained a consistent utilization of unassigned fund balance in that way. And so using the same model as we did this year, not funding warrant articles from unassigned fund balance, but using that to just buy down the total of appropriations, that $750,000 would reduce the tax rate, have a tax rate impact of reducing it 41 cents. So then the last section says, if everything passed, if all of the warrant articles passed, including all of the tax rate impacts, that would be just under one and a half million dollars of net appropriation, less the 750,000, a 79 cent impact on the tax rate, or $335 for a $425,000 property. And then the note below that says that there would be an additional tax rate impact starting in 2025 for the bonds. And like I mentioned earlier, that's just because it's a little bit funky how you talk about bond money. So I hope this is the information the select board is looking for, happy to answer questions.
Yes.
Can I just ask that you change the wording on this document? Because I think this is going to be important. On the two where there's bonds involved and you say beginning in 2025, can you potentially, are you open to changing the wording to beginning in future year 2025? So that people are real, and could you bold 2025 and underline it? I think it's important for people to understand the impact of what they're doing for voting in 2024 and how it does not have an impact for at least a year.
Right, so the, yes, I'm open to changing that for explanation documents. The, I got an updated recommendation from the town's attorney relative to the warrant article. And so, okay, so she, she suggested that the, the legally appropriate language for discussing tax rate impact for a bond initiative is that this article will have no impact on 2024 property taxes, but there is, but there will be required bond payments in future years, which will increase property taxes in those years.
Oh, does it really increase property tax? You don't know that. It will increase the budget, but you don't necessarily, if you, if you used the budget in other areas, it would not necessarily increase property taxes. It will increase the budget.
It would add to the budget.
I, I feel like that's, I feel like it's an assumption.
So fortunately.
It's an assumption.
Right, fortunately, we will have an opportunity to dissect the language of the warrant articles separately, but we have the benefit of being able to phrase it in the most appropriate legal way in the warrant article, and separately have the opportunity to discuss it with much more fluid language in the voter guide or other documents like this, talking about it. So to your initial point, adding some additional clarifying language, making it clear that it's future year 2025, no impact on 2024, perfectly appropriate.
I, I mean, we have people that, that literally walk in and have never read the warrant article and write their.
Right.
That actually happened. So I think emphasizing.
I have a question about the, the dam, capital reserve. Does that explicitly mention Swains? Is that, was that set up for Swains? Or could it include other dams and, and causeways and such? Such that rather than having multiple dam articles, is there a way to, I don't know, sort of combine those? I, I also wonder too, on the Richardson Dam, you know, it, it seems to get kicked down the road a bit, and, and what is the urgency of it actually by the state's perspective? Is this like a?
I don't even know yet.
Right? Could it be a three-year, a five-year plan?
Well, they've given us, I mean, they told us we need to attend to it, and they give us a year.
Well, yeah, they haven't really set timelines. So basically, my conversation with them has always been, it's a low-hazard dam, it's not a priority for us, you need to do something about it, as long as you're making progress, we're okay. And so like this past six months, I've been trying to get an answer from a different division of DES than the dam bureau. And I, I had copied the dam bureau engineer on all of my emails, and I check in with him, and, and he was the one who finally recommended, contact the supervisor, because that's, and, you know, we've, we've finally made some progress. We'll wait to give a full update until it's available. But that is the urgency of the state. Do something about it, you can't ignore it, but they've been satisfied with the progress, albeit slow.
Seems as a way to maybe perhaps reduce some of the warrant costs if you, if they were combined and you put half of that into it and then put another half in next year or something. You know, a way to kind of build towards all the dams and/or causeway, because that has to happen to you.
So yes, to your question, and, and I, it always bears reiterating, so I will reiterate it. The, for capital reserves, the single most important factor in determining the utilization is the purpose statement included in the original warrant article. The title doesn't matter. The, the wording in future warrant articles doesn't matter, as long as it's describing that originally established warrant article, the purpose statement from the original warrant article is all that matters. And so I'll go back and read that warrant article that established the dam repair, engineering, replacement capital reserve. I can tell you with confidence that it does not specify the Swains Lake Dam. So that capital reserve can be used for dam repair, engineering, replacement. To what extent, I'll let you know. I suspect that the language is too narrowly focused to do any work on the causeways, because they aren't classified as dams. To your point about consolidating the funding for Richardson Pond Dam into that one, absolutely possible. It would absolutely be an eligible expense of that capital reserve for the Richardson Pond Dam. So if, I heard as a conceptual proposal, what you say is, hey, maybe we don't, maybe the town needs to fund $200,000, but maybe we fund $100,000 this year, $100,000 in 2025, and plan to do the project in the low water of 2025, whatever the project is at that time. And instead of having a separate Richardson Pond Dam warrant article, we add $100,000 to the dam repair and engineering warrant article. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be possible.
Combined, one less warrant to read and vote on. We decided to do that.
Did you do what?
Repair and replace Richardson.
No, we're still waiting.
Yeah, that direction.
Might be removal, and then it wouldn't be covered under construction and engineering, would it?
It would depend on the purpose statement.
I think it's important to raise the money for Richardsons, but I think it seems like it could be maybe stretched, then combined to make the warrants a little bit easier to vote on.
So I'll read that purpose statement and report back, and I suspect at the December 4th meeting, I'll have a more comprehensive update on Richardson Pond Dam. I copied Joyce on a couple of emails, but probably it's a little bit confusing anyways.
It was very confusing.
It's, so, I'll, I'll take some time to describe it in the simplest terms as possible, where we are now, where we're going, but I'm pretty sure we're making progress.
Any other comments?
Where we're going, but we're making good time. We've got a long way to go, short time to get there.
All right, moving on.
We want to make sure also that our messaging is that capital reserve stabilizes tax rates.
Yeah.
Peaks and valleys.
Yes.
So moving on, exemption and credit changes, we do need to vote on this tonight. We discussed it at a previous meeting, and people needed to think about it some more.
So it's my understanding that based on what we're looking at here, it, it kind of shores up what we talked about, that we are actually relatively healthy in exemptions that we have. And in some cases, overly healthy in some of the exemptions that we have decided to perform.
Yeah, and so this document is a different way to look at the data. So the report that we do every year, the exemption and credit analysis, which we have reviewed for a couple of meetings now, looks at the state, compares the town to the state and the county. What this does is the 15 communities which were identified as comparable communities in the wage analysis, so either we have a similar size, or the similar number of employees, or a similar, similar operating budget, it compares those individual communities and the exemptions and credits offered there, and shows the, how we compare. The top shows the mean and the median, and then that if the social security cost of living since the last update, that says if, since those numbers were updated, if the social security cost of living adjustment were applied to those values each year since it was last updated, where would they be now? Kind of as a, as a, just a different metric, metric to look at the same information.
What would the purpose of that be?
So there was discussion at the last select board meeting about the tying increases to cost of living adjustments.
I was actually making a comment to the increase in income.
I think it was somebody different.
Yeah, and so I actually brought it up. I was not necessarily thinking about increases every year, but thinking since we did, you know, assessment of values and taxes, for many people have gone up this year, that acknowledging to our disabled and disability residents in town by at least some recognition that.
I thought there was so little impact.
But I think it is a statement.
I'm not sure I understand, Joyce.
Well, I think that.
Statement what?
Well, that we.
We still care.
That we still care, in, in a sense. I think that it gives a little bit of money, and then it's, other boards in the future can decide if they want to build on that, but I, I would say a one-time, give a, a small update, expense update, is a statement to residents in town who are living tight incomes.
Could I ask, with the budget committee?
Well, they, they haven't discussed it, so the vice chair wouldn't be able to say what the budget committee thinks. We can talk about it tomorrow, but the, I guess this comes back to what the select board wants the budget committee to weigh in on. Do you want the budget committee, when we talked last, you, you were kind of thinking you didn't want the budget committee to weigh in on exemption and credit changes.
I'm trying to, I, I guess, what I'm trying to get at is, statistically, we looked at numbers based on the new assessments, because we wanted to, as a select board, make an educated decision about whether assessments had a huge impact on residents that were living with lower level incomes, or on fixed incomes, or were of an age where their income will only increase by a social security change. There was so little impact that I am actually surprised that, that you're proposing making a change to these, because from a analysis perspective, it's not warranted.
So there were residents who were not paying anything now, but under.
I'm paying $250, $36, $75, one person who was impacted by $750. I was thrilled to see that there's very little impact to the changes in the value of their owned property. I guess for me, to be honest, Joyce, I, I don't think we should be basing decisions for the municipality on emotions. And I feel like, yes, that's a very caring response, but the numbers just don't flush shit out. Am I wrong in, in that analysis?
Those residents may have a different perspective. Jim?
I'm sure they were.
I, you know, to touch on what Connor said, and if we were thinking that we didn't want the advisory budget to, to be in there, if I was on that board, I'm, I'm going to change my way now, because I think we should have the budget committee, that's what they're there for, to suggest, say, hey, it's what we're projecting, running the numbers. But, you know, we need to offer that to, you know, in lack of better terms, the, the penny pinchers in town that are like, hey, I work hard every day, and, you know, and I'm never going to get old, or be disabled, or so on and so forth, and, and bring what they have to say, because it's, it's data, right? And we should, we should process that data, whether, whether or not, how we feel, and make sure that it makes sense for the town. And if it makes sense to leave it as it is, we'll leave it as is, or if they come up with a better solution that is going to better the town, why not take that opportunity and discuss it?
So I think it's a select board issue, and, and no one else may agree with me, that's fine.
I actually do agree with you. So I, I think we end up a scope creep when we ask them to evaluate revenue exemptions. We've asked them to look very firmly at budget and all that is associated with that, and expanded our scope to include capital improvement plan, because based on reality, that's the budget two years, three years, five years from now, and it will impact advisory budget committee, but I think in reference to exemptions and credits. I, I think the hard part for me is, I think that doing something based on emotion is not an appropriate course of action. I think doing something based on the data is. And I'm not comfortable over one taxpayer having to pay $750, making a decision that impacts the town, because the other 7,000 households bear the burden of every single exemption we vote on. And there were some very, much, much larger increases to many people's taxation than the $250 that we saw on that breakdown, or the $36 that we saw, or the $75 that we saw. The one other thing, in looking at that or analyzing it, you have not looked at what the value of the asset was. So if somebody's incurring a 700, I don't, I don't know what their calculation was on their asset, but I'm assuming if they're incurring a $750 tax bill when they did not have one prior to this, it means their home's worth 300, 400, something thousand dollars. It's probably not one of the.
Yeah, my guess with that anomaly, the, that there was a renovation or addition that contributed to added value, because it was an outlier, I haven't investigated it, I don't know. I think something else that, that we've been discussing internally about those residents that have real concern that the added tax burden, whether it comes from a, a change in assessment or additional money approved at, at town meeting, that that burden makes them feel that they won't be able to stay in their home or stay in Barrington. And it's important to note that there's a provision in state statute called. And it's important to note that there's a provision in state statute called tax deferral. And it's not a, a subjective decision of a community or the select board. It's a, it's a shall issue as long as they are eligible. And eligibility is relatively simple. Anybody over 65, or anybody who is disabled, social security disabled, is able to apply to have their taxes deferred. And the big, the biggest thing that that does is it puts a lien on the property so that the town will eventually be able to collect those tax revenues. But it prevents the tax dealing and the eviction process that would generally follow if somebody didn't pay their taxes.
Never not own their home. They'll never not, that can't be taken from them.
Right.
Never not own their home.
Correct.
So, if they own their home outright, they'll never not own their.
Right, and so the, there is one limit placed on that. There are no income or asset. You could have a million dollars in the bank and apply for tax deferral and take advantage of that program. The, you can only have liens on the property, no more than 80% of the value, the assessed value of the property. And that's obviously because the town needs to make sure that they can recover the property taxes. And so, if you get up over what it's worth, you can recover them. And then the second piece is some folks that have mortgages on their property, in order to participate in the tax deferral program, they need, they would need to have the mortgage hold or sign off on, on that program. They would need essentially their permission, not just someone if you had an easement or. So, that's a program that residents have available to them now. A lot of residents don't participate in that program. But when we're having tough conversations with residents that, that truly fear being forced out of their home because of the rising taxes, that's a relief valve that we can explain, an opportunity, a program that exists where they can stay in their home. You have to be over 65 or disabled. And that program is available. They apply on a state form to the, to the assessor. And assuming that they're eligible, they meet the criteria. Excuse me, I think some of the subtle criteria, you have to have been in the community for five years, so you can't move the community, participate in tax deferral. That's for the over 65. If you're disabled, you only have to be in the community for a year. But anyways, so we've been talking about it internally, and, and I think we're going to not promote the program, but we're going to make sure residents know about it. You know, we've included the exemptions and credits in the tax bill insert, but we haven't mentioned the tax deferral program. Not for any reason other than it's not an exemption or a credit, but it's an opportunity that is available to taxpayers. So, for those conversations that, you know, we care, we're interested, you know, that's a, that's something that we can talk about now, even without any changes to the exemptions or credits, so.
And that's something we have not utilized in the past.
Well, it's not anything for us to utilize, it's something for property taxpayers to utilize.
Right, but to let them know about.
Yeah, we haven't promoted it, which is kind of a funny way to say it, but we, yeah, we, we haven't.
Bring it up.
Yeah, so, so I, I think that we will do that and see what happens.
And then the other thing that that does, the value of that home, I mean, the value of the home is going to increase exponentially larger over that timeframe than these taxes ever would be. Say, say the one example, the outlier that we're talking about, that is getting a $750 tax bill. Say they live 35 years. And they incur $26,000 worth of tax debt under that program. That home in Barrington is going to be worth $26,000 more when that person finishes their journey here. And my point in all this is, I don't think we're wrong for caring, I think it's important that we care. The numbers just didn't tell us that we're supposed to make this move this year. And I think it's irresponsible to continue to expand exemptions, pushing taxes onto other taxpayers when many of them just got much larger tax bills.
I think this option, which is probably new to most of us on the board, is, probably offers the relief that I'm looking for, for those people who just can't pay that.
Because, yeah, I, I had an assumption, I mean, just even with some of the people I know on this board, all about helping others, and, you know, coming from a guy who leads with my heart over my head majority of the time. I am a firm believer that there is help out there for people who are in need and want help. It's not out there for the people who don't want to talk about it and actually get the help and, and use it beneficially. It's there whether, you know, you're disabled, elderly, and/or a veteran. I know that on all three of those facts, and, and it's out there. But people have to want to do it. We can't expect other people to do it for other people and/or have other people pay taxes just because somebody doesn't want to put their best foot forward in the morning and become, you know, as sustainable by themselves as they can be.
One of the things that we talked about today, and we talked about energy, and many people have absolutely no idea that this program is available. But the state government pays community action programming out of Dover, because that's Draper County location. And they send energy auditors out to homes, and they fund upgrading the furnace. They fund replacing windows to create less draft, reduce heating bills, plus the programming that allows for coverage of the electric bills, coverage of the heating bills.
We'd think they would be out of money halfway through.
They're not though, and very often, with what has happened at a federal level, more dollars have come into the state to provide for those programs. So, at the same time that we're saying, hey, there's a tax deferral program available, we should also be saying, hey, there's also these resources available to reduce your energy costs, to increase the value of your property. I mean, even a mill or furnace in a mobile home these days, which used to be $2,500, is $5,000 now. So, getting some help through those programs increases the value of their property and reduces their energy bills. I just.
So, our next text insert might want to have.
Right, our energy committee, I'm very glad to report, is preparing a door-to-door campaign promoting those energy programs. And so, that.
People have no idea that they're.
Are they going to go door-to-doors?
Go door-to-door.
As you said, that relief will help put coin back in the pocket for whatever purchases they, they made or may need to, to, to live their life, you know? But the, the, I do, we are very helpful in town, we're very resourceful. And, you know, and I don't think anybody's come up to the, to the town doors and said, I need help. And somebody locked it, said, try tomorrow. If anything, if somebody pick on the door open and it's late, then help's out there.
Unless they come on Friday.
That's right. You're going to get here before 7:00 AM on Friday. No, I'm kidding, that was a joke. Yeah, no, I just.
All right, do we have a motion to move forward?
I wasn't going to make a motion, I was going to status call the exemptions and credits.
Yeah, there are no changes, that's.
That will be the motion.
No actions necessary.
Right, okay.
Yeah, no, no actions necessary if you don't want to make any changes.
Okay, great. Moving ahead, the Joint Advisory Budget Committee Transfer Station and Recycling Center Review Committee meeting.
This was a fantastic meeting. We, we set up the tables in a long row here, it's recorded, you can watch it online. The, the Advisory Budget Committee and Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee had spirited discussion about the future of the facility as it relates to revenue and expected cost increases from waste management. And there were two unanimous recommendations from this group of people who, who I would say come from a very different perspective of town involvement.
Facilitated this.
Me.
Good job.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the, the two, the two topics, which are very much overlap, and the select board has talked about before. But one is setting a revenue target for the transfer station, recognizing that there is the vast majority of that facility that should be paid by user fees, and there are certain administrative components which should be covered by property taxes through the operating budget. So, the group actually went line item by line item in the transfer station budget and identified that those non-wage benefit, training, or dues operating costs, which represent about 72% of the budget, should be the target for revenue through user fees. And so, in a vacuum, how this recommendation would work, if the select board supports it, is that each year, we would do a look back at revenue collected for the year compared to expenditures in those categories. And if our revenue is not meeting our expenditures, which in 2023 is 72%, then we would, the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee would recommend changes to the user fees, which would be aimed at meeting that target. Now, if revenue was in excess, I would say consistently, maybe for more than a year or two, then the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee would consider recommending changes, but may not. So, that's the first recommendation, looking for ratification from the select board. But before you decide, if you say that, yes, we want to do that, we're actually going to just take that and put it on the shelf for a few years. Because what we talked about in earnest, which the select board has talked about before, is what we're going to do when waste management likely doubles our fees in 2027 at the end of our contract. You remember, we asked them for a contract extension, and they were increasing our fees 30% one year, 40% the next year, it was crazy. It was, we have a sweetheart contract now, and we, the select board decided we're just going to ride that out. But we want to keep in mind 2027 and what we can do about it. And so, the proposal, and the big fear in 2027 is two things. One, in order to pay the double, doubling of fees from waste management, we're going to have to double user fees and double taxes if we didn't do anything. That's bad government. It's bad government to double somebody's cost in, in one go, and to double the taxes is bad government also. The other thing is, so, so that problem, a solution to that problem, which is what we've talked about, is establishing a special revenue fund where we gradually increase fees up to that doubling. And when I say gradually, I'm talking like 20% a year. We're not talking small changes, we're talking big changes, but big changes consistently to get to that doubling of fees. So, we gradually increase fees and capture the additional revenue to set aside into the special revenue fund to allow us to basically feather in to the new fees so that we don't have to double property tax burden in one year, or double user fees in one year. The other kind of like little asterisk as far as a special revenue fund is it gives us flexibility for 2027 because it could be that in 2027, we no longer want to pay waste management to transfer our weight, our cans, our compacted cans, our open-top bins at the transfer station. And we want to use that money that we've set aside to buy a roll-off truck and just haul it up to Rochester ourselves. That's what Lee does, other communities do that as well. Maybe, maybe we, there's a cooperative agreement that exists in 2027, I don't know. But the group discussed it in earnest and felt that it was the right approach. And this is a warrant initiative, establishing a special revenue fund, you'll see it on that warrant list. And so, what the committee didn't discuss, because I hadn't really crunched enough numbers yet, was exactly how to increase user fees over the next three years. I crunched some numbers since then, and, and I'll get it back to them before we finalize anything. But the, the math works well to, to cap the revenue into the general fund at 225,000. That's what we collected in revenue this year, so there'll be no loss of revenue in the general fund. And then, starting January 1st, 2024, so in, you know, a month, increase fees 20%. Increase them again, January 1st, 2025. Increase them again, January 1st, 2026, 20% every time. And then, as we get closer, you know, we'll look at exactly how much we have to change in 2027.
Brown that to like the nearest like nickel or something.
Yeah, it's not going to be, so we talked about that at length.
We're not going to go to 144 for trash bag, can we go to like 150?
It's an excellent point.
157.93.
It's an excellent point, because the user fees for that facility are, you know, $6 for a rug that's this big, and $8 for a rug that's that big. And so, what the, and this will really be the burden of the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee. We'll give them a target, we need to bring in this much additional revenue, figure out how to do it. That they, we talked conceptually that it might only be changing the fee for two categories. One, trash bags, and two, contractor bags. You kind of have to change them together, because if trash bags get too expensive, and everybody just puts their stuff in contractor bags and put it in the open tops where the birds and the animals and everything get in, so you kind of have to do them together. But it could be that the only actual change in user fees is trash bag prices and contractor bag prices, and the rest just stay the same or change as necessary. So, unanimously recommended by the joint meeting of the Budget Committee and the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee, and looking for ratification by this group. And the special revenue fund is, is going to be a warrant article, so it'll be in 2024.
It says 2023 in there, but let's, let's do it in March.
I wanted to do it last year, but we were just sitting on our hands. Yeah, so, so just update that to 2024.
Retrospective warrant article.
Dan, do you want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion. To set a revenue target for user fees for the Transfer Station Recycling Center equal to all non-wage benefit, training dues, operating costs approximately cost, or approximately 72%.
Vote on that.
Roll call. Hardicoff flag?
Keep tonight.
And check eye.
Skoshay.
Happy LOI, that passes, another motion?
Your turn.
Make a motion to present voters with a warrant article in 2023 to establish.
2024. That's my bad, I, I set you up for failure, Jim.
You had one job.
Doc my pay, I know, yeah, just one.
Make a motion to present voters with a warrant article in 2024 to establish a special revenue fund for the Transfer Station and Recycling Center, which retains 225,000 in the general fund and further to support incrementally increasing user fees approximately 20% per year.
In a second.
Okay, roll call.
Hardicoff flag?
Keep tonight.
And check eye.
Skoshay.
Happy LOI, that motion passed. Is there any new business coming before the board?
No.
All right, select board reports and concerns.
I have not had a chance.
Okay, Hardicoff?
Zoning had a denial of a request for, this was hard, for commercial animals in a, in a residential area. And then, two, we were terrible, that was, that was a difficult case. Talk about wanting to lead with your emotions. I couldn't, anyway, no.
There's chickens, there's chickens.
Newbie and goats, they were so cute, anyway. And then, two continued cases, because they're so complex, we needed legal involved. One of them had a conditional use through planning and required a big zoning change that was perplexing. So, we needed to read through about five years of meeting minutes and present legal for some advice on that. Other than that, we met with the housing committee, right? Was that in between our last meeting?
No, I think that was.
No, we already talked about that? Other than that, I'm done.
Okay, Rob?
Yeah, nothing new, an energy committee met on the 16th, it's really just discussing what was happening tonight, so that's it.
The recycling committee and budget committee, we have all that stuff. Simultaneous meetings of school board and the trustees, library trustees, and I opted for school budget because it was, they were going to discuss budget. And so, from the last time I reported, I think it was 28 million, they've now increased it to 6.82% increase from last year, or 29,937, $37,041. They've actually, they're bumping theirs up, and there's still some more to talk about.
I don't think that, it's probably still going through legal, but the final refinement on classics, private roads, technology committee, I know we're still grinding gears for the upgrades that we're doing. And then, the rec department, Jesse's on there, I've not had a chance to catch up with her today.
Okay.
Yep.
No one showed up for pickleball on Wednesday.
Dan was sole survivor at pickleball, noted.
Planning board.
Call me next time.
So, currently, we have a 50-foot wetland buffer reduction. And so, when planning board is asked to approve, oftentimes, it's like a road crossing on a buffer. There's now a proposal to look at assessing the value of those wetlands, so you have a better sense of how much, of the importance and the value of those wetlands. So, a 16-point scoring thing was presented to us, it was prepared by the Conservation Commission and Mark. and Mark Jacobs, a certified wetland soil scientist, and a colleague of his, Dell Matson. And the Conservation Commission wants to use this for a one-year trial, and they will do the scoring. The scoring is set up for the homeowner to do, although most of us on Planning Board looked at that. How would we work through this? So the Conservation Commission is going to test the tool for a year, and they figure there's not that many applications where this will come up, so they need to do that. And then they'll report back, and we'll discuss it again as to the value, utility of it.
So is this on like the credits for like wetlands, like if I'm like Shell and I need a Tier 1 wetland?
Just really, what's the value of this wetland? Is it a low value, is it a high value of the, in the buffer zone only?
And this is just local regulation. We have an additional buffer requirement in our zoning.
Does this affect any of the cases currently in front of your Planning Board?
No.
Okay.
So it will be after then. Okay. At least anything that's come in with design. And then, most things were postponed until the next meeting at the very last minute, the Ayers Lake Campground, which wants to separate out the campgrounds from the camps and the house.
Okay.
But that got postponed at the last minute.
When you say separated out, you mean one divided into two separate lots?
Actually, it'll end up being three.
Three separate properties.
Because they're going to do the house separately.
Farm itself.
Right.
Oh.
So it hasn't come yet, so I don't have any more details than that. And then there was a conceptual discussion on the Koots Farm, and so that is...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're looking at 160 units, 37 of those would be duplexes, and the rest would be single-family. And that would leave about 450 acres of open space. But again, it's a conceptual, there is prime wetland there. They'll need to do some thinking about how they're...
And that's a class what, road, Class 5?
Well...
That's Class 5.
Which is the scenic road. Cannon Road is a scenic road.
That's still a Class 5 road.
So with the... Cannon Back Road, because it has that scenic designation, we didn't talk about this at Planning Board, but a member of the public said to me, well, that road can never be paved because of that designation. Is that the case?
That's not necessarily what it means. It's more difficult to pave it with such a designation. The primary function of a scenic road is the protection of stone walls and trees. And
Beautiful.
In order to pave a road, you usually need to move stone walls, and you always need to cut trees. And so there's a process that you have to follow in order to do either. And that process includes noticing abutters and public hearings, and designations by the road agent or the Select Board, and the Planning Board, there's hearings at the Planning Board. And so, to my knowledge, there's nothing about a scenic road that prevents it from being paved.
Correct, and those restrictions
I would encourage everyone to go out and walk that roadway, it's gorgeous.
But I think, who knows where the driveways are going to end up, but there would be access.